So YouTube caught the moment you held up your your the badge, the Dr. J. Adams thing. So that's currently showing on the screen is the.
Was it backwards, Josh?
No, it's the right way, which is interesting because huh, that's interesting. Usually it is backwards.
I'm surprised there's nobody else on yet.
Yeah, they like to wait till the last moment and make you think, oh, did I come at the wrong time or did the usually about seven fifty six is when I start seeing or six fifty six is when I'll start seeing people show up. So. Okay, everything is all set. Recording is active. YouTube streaming is working and everything's configured. So you're good to go.
Great. Thanks, Josh. And I'll explain to Kelly's a host, right?
So I've made you co-host. I think that gives you the power to assign other co-hosts, but I'll, I'll be sticking around in the room for just a little bit longer. While I get started with the other meetings. So if she pops on, I'll make sure she has the co-host or if you want to see if you can grant her co-host.
Yeah, probably. I'm guessing I, let's see under more.
Yeah, see if you can make Jamie a co-host, see if there's the option.
Uh, no, I can only change her role to attendee.
Oh, interesting.
Or remove her. Don't worry, Jamie, I'm not removing you.
I think she's still connecting to audio.
Hello.
Hi, Jamie.
How are you?
I'm good.
Three more meetings this week. I'm good.
All right. Well, Josh has to take off. He's got another meeting. So I'm co-hosting and we'll get Kelly set up too, hopefully.
All right.
Dan, you're the sole board representative. I hope we get a quorum.
All right. Well, we've got, we've got four minutes.
I hope everybody remembers it got moved.
Yeah.
We'll need to remind everyone as they come on that Josh set us up. We're recording live on YouTube right now.
Okay.
Our first snowstorm. Ready, Jamie?
Absolutely.
I can't tell. Are they saying six inches?
First real snowstorm. So busy, I haven't even looked at it.
Yeah.
I don't get worried until the 4:00 AM in the morning thereof.
Right.
Hey, Jim, if I were you, I'd cut a little hole above your Christmas tree there.
Yeah, who knew?
We are recording live right now.
All right, I'm gonna go out and come back in because for some reason my video is not pulling up, so.
Hi, everybody.
Kelly, Josh has another meeting he has to go to. So he has set us up. We're on YouTube and we are recording ahead of the start of the meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for the heads up.
Sure.
Sorry, I was a bit delayed.
Can I also get co-host status or shareability status? So when we get to item four? I don't know how.
You should already have it. I see that all panelists can share.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you are co-host.
Right.
Okay, so my video is not working for whatever reason. And I'm wondering if it's because I skipped the update today. So I'm going to work on that for a minute. You guys have fiber out there in Queachy? Of course. Are you kidding? Queachy, we got all kinds of stuff.
Where do you think I am?
Well, Jamie, I gotta say, sometimes yours comes in and out.
I don't know. That's not has to do with the fiber in Queachy. It has to do with the amount of stuff we have hooked up to it. Too many TV sets.
All right, Kelly, looks like you have a quorum.
Brilliant. I was just trying to count that. Are we good? Yes. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Ah, there we go. Okay, seven, eight, we're good. All right. So I'll go ahead and call us to order then. And the first order of business is any members of the public who might want to address the board on any matters not already on the agenda for this evening. All right, seeing none, I will move right on to agenda review. Anything to add or rearrange? Um, I will just note for the board that we do have need of a non, a brief non-public at the end of the meeting. So just as a heads up on that. Any other items to add? Yes, Jay?
Kelly, on the non-public, we, we, I think we're going to be talking about some possible necessary additional FTEs for the high school.
Thank you, Jay.
Which we, we haven't brought to the board prior.
So that would require them potentially a motion coming out of non-public?
Correct.
Okay, super. So we'll add that as we get to that point or Jay, if you think if you think it's appropriate to add it now, please feel free to do so with your, with your all powerful editing privileges. Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, then we will move on to the budget presentation. Jamie.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was, you know, I was printing. I was printing. So let me just do speaker view. There we go. And we can make this smaller. And I am going to, I can one second, do share screen over to board docs. There we go. All right. So I'm on the wrong meeting. One second, sorry. I was there and then you guys are too quick. So as you can see here in board docs, we have attached the budget book and supporting documentation. I'm just going to pull this up really quickly so everybody can understand what it's all about. It has a narrative about all the different changes and all of these supporting documents are except for 12 because I'm awaiting more information from state of Vermont. Okay, so we have prepared. We have prepared a budget presentation. I'm going to stop my video because Jay jinxed me. And my roommate's home, so I don't know what she's streaming. Anyway, here is our proposed district budget. This is a like 20,000 foot overview of Ben and where we are now, moving into the end of December. I do believe there will be a few changes made to it prior to the January version that will be brought to the board for ratification. Principals, Jim and Tim will be helping me with this presentation tonight when we get to their sections. And I'm sure that the budget committee members, Chair Hartman, Garrett Palm, Kelly, I believe is on Dresden, yourself, and I know Dan attends Dresden sometimes and so does Rick Johnson and so does Tom. Tom Camden. So without further ado, we started the process. This year was a little bit weird because we were dealing with the COVID pandemic and how we were going to open schools all the way up to the end of August, beginning of September. So we still embarked on the journey and tried to keep it on target time wise. And so we set a budget guideline in September after compiling a quick model with indicators that we knew to be true or were projected at that point in time. I won't read it for you. And this is a consolidated version. The original budget guideline is a two-page document. Can be found on the Dresden September meeting. This gives you an overview of the items that we knew at that point in time and then what some of the unknown factors were. The budget guideline set was set at not to exceed 3%. We'll come back to that. So this document is large, has a lot of information in it. I'm not going to really speak to it on this screen. However, I'll make it a little bit larger and, and I will also attach it in board docs by itself so that people can go out and print it if they want to without printing the whole PowerPoint. What this document does is it shows you the budget as adopted for 2021, which is the first column. We have been through four versions of this budget build for Dresden. Version one was an internal version that wasn't shared. Version two was our first version that we shared back, I believe, on November, let's start and think. Would have been early, probably November 2nd. And at that point in time, the version we shared was at 3.41%. So obviously we were over the target. We never, we don't really know what it's going to look like. The first version as we bring it together because there are four or five people building different sections. And then it's sent to the finance office and we compile it into the one big budget that you see before you tonight. We went back with a charge to come in under the budget guideline. And so proposed version three compares again to the budget adopted. So you can see what changed in version three. And so we came in at 2.80% overall. So we were within the budget guideline and we thought, wow, what a great job. We'll come back to that again because this truly, when we look at this percentage only looks at the expenditure side of the budget as built. It does not take into consideration revenue in the resulting assessments to each one of our towns, Norwich and Hanover. We, we then in between built the revenue budget and saw that the result of a 2.8% as-built budget was going to drive assessments out to our, our towns that were in excess of 5% in Hanover and in, in excess of 11% in Norwich. That's the assessment change itself. So you can see all of those documents on the Dresden Budget Committee under the board docs. You can go up to the right side of the board docs and there's a section up here where you can go. And so all of the attachments are there. So we came back and we had a bunch of meetings and the principals are going to talk about that. Um, we, and we have a proposed version four. And it had many different changes and I call this four A because we have a proposed version four that's posted in our Dresden Budget Committee meeting on December 7th. That is a tenth of a percent higher than this one. The high school came in with further budget cuts. So at the end of the day, this is the version that we are presenting in the budget book. It is a 1.37% increase over the budget year that we are in right now. And it's an increase of $382,172. This view that you're looking at here is the function view. So it breaks it down by departments. There is also an object view that is posted in the Dresden Budget Committee and it's also attached as supporting documents to the budget book, which would show you the other view that shows like salaries, benefits. You know, different services for custodial and transportation and all of those types of things. Equipment and supplies. This doesn't give you that view. This gives you the view by function. So this is the budget we have built together. And moving along, uh, part of the reason why we went through four versions of building the budget is what we call a revenue challenge. In our revenue challenge, the budget committee members asked me to speak to this challenge so people could understand why it seems to yo-yo up and down somewhat each year. We have a situation where the Hanover School District tuitions their sixth grade to the Dresden School District to the Richmond Middle School. We project this number a year in advance, basically, based on October 1st. Actual students attending the fifth grade at the Ray School. The calculation also includes a true-up for prior year adjustments, which you can see in yellow here in the chart that I'm sharing with you. This true-up can compound the issue. And then it makes the revenue stream, which is this dollar amount here that is paid from Hanover to Dresden, go up and down. As you can see from 1920, Hanover paid Dresden $1.5 million. Then in 2021, it went up by almost a million dollars. They paid them 2.5 million. Then this year it dropped again by 720,000. Hence the yo-yo effect of the revenues in Dresden without any other changes occurring. So that affects the assessments. So this is the base amount in blue here and that is based on the enrollment sizes that we project over here in the second column. Uh, so we have been working with a working committee, with a Hanover Working Committee about studying the issue. And it's not the first time it's been discussed. And we're hoping that through all of the work and efforts of the committee, we can bring forward a suggestion regarding this sixth grade tuition revenue challenge that Dresden faces each year. This schedule is also included, I believe, in the support documents. If not for Dresden, it is for Hanover and it shows a 20-year view. This is going to be spoken to a little bit later tonight in the Dresden Board Meeting, okay, about the sixth grade study group. Okay, so moving on, this was the budget summary for district-wide. Basically, the budget is built in three sections. Okay, Dresden is three sections. We have one section that's called district-wide. This is the function overview of district-wide. It's the smallest of the three budgets and it holds the different costs that are not directly attributed to the schools, but shared by everybody in the schools. So we have some costs in regular education, which include the volunteer coordinator. She's housed here and then billed back to the different schools that use her, Hanover and Norwich for her services to help with volunteer coordination. Also included in that 1100 section would be some technology costs for equipment that are shared across the districts. The superintendent services, that is the cost for the SAU budget. That's Dresden's share of the SAU budget. You can see this is increasing this year. And that is based on a technology increase of FTEs in the district-wide in the SAU budget that will be used district-wide as we move forward, hopefully with a technology infrastructure upgrade. And we can take a look at that a little bit later in the presentation. School admin is flat, building maintenance and custodial is up a little bit. You can see that that's going to be up throughout all of the budget builds. For the simple reason, the New Hampshire retirement system rate increases for both teachers and employees. If you're not a certified staff member such as teachers or other, excuse me, types of certified staff, you would be included in the employee section. And both of them have had significant increases this year coming out of New Hampshire retirement. The good thing about Dresden is folks who participate, teachers can choose between Vermont or New Hampshire. Vermont is much cheaper for the Dresden School District to be participating in. So that helps to keep a little bit of this cost down. The teacher's rate is going from 17.8% to 21%. It's an increase of 18.1% in the rate. And then the employees' rate is going from 11.1% up to 14, over a little over 14%. And that's an increase of about 25% for the rate. Also included throughout this whole entire budget build is health insurance increases. We initially had built the quick model at 5%. It came in with a not to exceed at 9.7, I believe, 7%. And then we had what they call a rate discount from surplus that they give back against the rate. And so we have built into here a rate of 2.2% for the teachers and support staff union. The not to exceed rate for the service staff and non-union is in, I think, four and a half percent, 4.4 actually. Okay, so overall, the district-wide increase is $100,862. It's 1.91% over last year and it represents a total of 36 tenths of a percent of Dresden's total district budget growth. All right, the enrollment forecast was a very interesting situation this year with our COVID pandemic. Normally, we're looking, going to look at this two different ways this year as we have at both of the other districts under the SEU 70 umbrella. On September, I think 8th, right, we opened the doors. This is the amounts that we had for actual students. Okay, in the 2021 column. So as you can see, we had projected 378. We came in with 358. This was on October 1. It does go up and down. We have gained students in most of our schools. Um, at the high school, we had projected 727. We came in at 703. So overall, we were down quite a few students. We're going to speak.
Sorry, Jamie, can you just remind us that includes remote learners as well, right?
Right. So yeah, we're going to talk to that on the next slide, Kelly. Here we go. Yep. So as Kelly mentioned, we have now a COVID-19 adjusted slide here. And we chose to do this because budgeting with pandemic numbers is not is not easy, but it really doesn't tell the true story of what will most likely occur when, when and if hopefully we go back to school in a somewhat normal situation next September. So we had homeschool withdrawals that we know of for, for the sixth, seventh, sixth through 12th grade in the amount of 22 students of our own. We also had students that were withdrawn who would normally have been here tuitioning in. And some of them have gone to part-time status, which will affect some of our numbers a little further in. So what we chose to do was take the 1920 actuals and we are pushing those forward along with including the homeschooling students and normal adders and subtractions that we would do based on historical numbers. All of these in their entirety on the build can be viewed in our budget build discussions. You know, and our class sizes, you know, incoming in the sixth grade, this is mostly all based on Hanover. Seventh grade is where Norwich students join us. And then we also usually take in tuition students in the lower grades, somewhat a few, as you can see, five. Been maintaining five. We've been as high as eight or nine. And then we, we drop off the graduating class of tuition students and then we bring in, we speculate based on class sizes and percentages of the schools that send to us from prior years and we push those numbers forward. Okay, so we will take a look at that information and based on what we think the class sizes will look like, we then do the staffing. We project staffing. And here's where I am going to, if Tim's with us, ask Tim to join me, Tim and/or Anissa to join me as they have built this portion of the budget.
Okay, as I am here, my video is acting up. So it's just my dulcet tones this evening. But you can see our certified staff. We've actually cut down on some of our staff this year. We had a staff position, the intervention win teacher that was passed in last year's budget that was never hired because we knew that COVID was going to cause some problems. That was at point eight. We have through some reshuffling and some retirements proposed that we also go down a point four. We have, through some reshuffling, uh, and some retirements proposed, that we also go down a point four um, in math slash computer science, sort of depending on how things work out. Uh, that obviously doesn't add up to point nine one, but, um, the sort of vagaries of our schedule, when you shift, um, increased sections to the eighth grade, the English picks up, uh, a portion of, um, an FTE in order to cover the English class because they have double periods. Um, so that's part of it, and then we also, this year made, um, uh, we've had some other increases, uh, involving, um, some technical support that were, uh, obviously not that, that large at that point. We are proposing, taking back right now, we have a, an ed assistant who was part-time in the front office to help out with clerical work. Um, we think that we can absorb that through other people in the front office. And looking at the numbers, um, from special ed for next year, it looks as if we'll be able to eliminate one of our ed assistants as well. We have a number of people who have one-on-one requirements, uh, moving out. Um, I can say, though, just in terms of fluctuation, that this is something that can change. Um, we were pretty solid about these numbers until about six weeks ago, when we had a couple, I guess, one person move into the RAY school, who is looking as if they might need some more support in sixth grade, and then some things that have happened at Marion Cross that may, uh, may need us to increase there as well. So that number is always a bit of a moving target in terms of the number of aides that we need based on IEPs, which are, you know, mandated. We can't really fudge that, so. Um, that would give our, our lowers in the FTE, and that represents a, a large portion of, um, sort of, uh, the cuts in our budget that we are proposing for this year. So I don't know, we wanna just keep going, Jamie?
Yeah, we'll move right into your budget highlights from a high-level overview of, you know, what occurred.
This is the high-level overview, and this is where you can tell that I, I was the social studies person, cuz it's all in the narrative and not so much in the, uh, chart part of this, but, um, we took a chance, we took a, an opportunity this year with the pandemic to convene our building level budget committee. Um, and rather than just sort of, we knew that, that things were a little bit up in the air, and rather than just roll over what we had had in the budget previous to that, um, we decided to take a look at the budget as a whole and make sure that everything that we were budgeting was actually representing what our sort of mission and vision were for the school. Um, and to sort of, you know, at the base level, put our money where our mouth is and say that if we're really trying to privilege one area or another, we make sure that the, the money is where it's supposed to be. So we went back and forth, as Jamie had said, we sort of proposed a budget, and then came back with another one, and then another one, so. Um, but the bottom there, the focus has always remained on the student experience, which leads us to really, uh, privilege and put forth, uh, FTEs in the classroom that students are best served by highly qualified teachers in the classroom, rather than, uh, stuff. So, next slide, I guess, and we know that this year is gonna be an interesting budget year. We knew that going in. So the things that we had originally requested that ended up not being included was that we had um, an original proposal. Our original proposal was part of the Dresden budget that was three point four, included, um, about sixty thousand dollars in upgrades for our library and makerspace areas, and ten thousand dollars for a virtual reality cart. Those are both things that we had cut out of last year's budget. Uh, we thought we would go ahead and try to put forward this year, and when it became clear we couldn't, then we went ahead and took out the shelving and the virtual reality cart, putting those off for another year, and then we took out twenty-one thousand dollars in equipment, which is basically, um, desks and other classroom equipment. Um, we were able to, uh, in the COVID situation, we were able to get um, some new desks into our classrooms so that we can maintain distancing. So we thought we could go ahead and use those. So the next slide would be. Oh, and we also knew that we had spent, we had gone over budget in the, um, um, creation of our remote academy, so we were trying to make sure that we, you know, sort of even things out a bit. So our main budget reductions for this year include the, the point four professional FTE, which will allow, this year we have our tech coordinator, which previous to this had been a full-time tech coordinator, or a point eight tech coordinator, point two teaching. Um, and we're basically gonna increase that position to be more teaching, um, which allows us to eliminate point four total FTE between math and computer science. Um, we gave back the win teacher, which had never been filled. And then we talked about the ed assistance there as well. The combined, uh, reduction with retirements, because we have a couple of retirements as well, um, of people who are at the top of the spectrum, we're hoping to be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings. We also cut field trips, uh, PE and other equipment assemblies, the idea being there that, uh, we don't know if we're even gonna be able to do those, and if we do, we think we can probably pursue private funding for those areas because we wanna have things coming in. We cut back on textbooks. Uh, we're gonna do a pretty concerted study as to how many textbooks we actually use, as opposed to, um, sort of, uh, uh, internet subscriptions, which a number of things are using. And then we also cut back on our, we had a lot, a lot of money in there for transport for students from RMS, who are gonna take high school classes at the high school. Uh, dependent on what the high school does in terms of their schedule, um, that may become a little bit less tenable, so we can go ahead and cut that out of the budget. And then we had a power of we integrated unit, um, whose main proponent had retired, and we really don't have anybody stepping up to take that mantle, so we eliminated that from the budget as well. And the next one, I think is the last one. Um, and we had been asked too, that if, you know, with all those priorities of cutting and almost getting to a flat budget, if we were able to add things back in, I think our original thought would be to add back in the point four uh, FTE, knowing that that's an ongoing position. Um, but it's more in line with what the district wants to do in terms of our tech integration and having somebody there who's full-time, who can dedicate more time to the technological needs that we're gonna have. It also gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of our math program, so that if we need to offer more sections, um, in specific areas, we can do that. Uh, finally, you know, ideally, we'd like to re, we probably will hope in some way to restore some money for field trips or assemblies. Um, but we plan to do this, as opposed to doing it on a line item, which we had done before. Um, we're gonna try to create one, um, sort of bucket that that money will come out of, and we'll create a building level committee that will basically like the CSDC will take, uh, proposals from different people and decide, okay, which one of these field trips actually makes the most sense in terms of what's educational, how many people is it gonna serve? How, how efficient is it? Are we getting, you know, a fair amount of bang for our buck? Um, just to make sure that we're doing something for a lot of people, as opposed to sending four people a long way away. So that's, uh, basically where our budget is, uh, right now.
Thanks, Tim. And I would like to, I, I neglected to say this at the beginning, uh, my apologies. I would like to thank Janice Starkey, who is the bookkeeper at the, uh, Richmond Middle School, who did these beautiful slides set up the, she designed this last year, and we've, we're using it again. It's quite lovely with the two schools. Um, she's been very helpful in all things tech, technological here. Thank you.
And I would just say, um, financial, I would like to thank Janice, uh, incredible amount too, um, just for her patience, because I keep coming in and saying, I don't understand this, so. Uh, thank you very much to Janice and Anissa for helping me out with all this, and our building level people who have, um, did three Monday afternoons right before Thanksgiving to sort of hash all of this out.
Thanks, Tim. So the budget summary for Richmond Middle School is here. Again, it's by function, not object. If you'd like to look at it by object, please go out to the budget book and look at the, um, um, backup documentation. Uh, as you can see what Tim mentioned with some of these cuts here. Um, if you look at it by object, you'll see what he mentioned on the changes in the salaries and all. Uh, the RMS increase, as mentioned, is fifteen thousand two thirty-one. It's just slightly over last year's budget and represents about five tenths of a percent of Dresden's total district budget growth. Uh, next to the high school, and Principal Jim Logan can speak to, they have a lot of changes in staff, I think, at the high school?
There's not a lot of changes in staff. Um, we're gonna be reducing, um, a, a certified staff by point four. We're, or I'm confident that we can do it, um, internally, um, and we could pick up, um, those classes. Um, and then educational assistance, um, when we look at that, um, there is two positions that are being cut, um, from educational assistance, and then another. Um, we're hoping of point five, um, so, and that's all due to IEPs, um, through special ed services, so we're confident that we can make those cuts. So it comes out to a, a total cut of two point two one.
Right, and I guess what I should mention there, Jim, is that even though there's not a lot of changes in FTEs for the high school, um, as was mentioned in the significant, in the, uh, supporting documents for the budget book, the high school had a significant amount of teachers who are attaining track advancements. So, uh, a lot of the increases in the salary lines are not because FTEs were added. Uh, it was because there's been a lot of, um, um, a lot of learning going on at the high school level for some of the teachers, and it, and, you know, it goes in spurts. Uh, a couple of years ago, Richmond Middle School had a lot of teachers that were attaining track advancements. Um, so that's what I meant by the changes in the personnel.
Heard you, Jamie, when you said that.
Sure. We'll move along here.
Our budget highlights, um, I, I believe that we're gonna continue to provide the outstanding opportunities that, um, for all students in grades nine through twelve. Um, and, you know, I can't thank the coordinators enough. This was my first go-around with the Hanover High School budget, and, uh, you know, there was a lot of conversation that took place, um, collectively and individually, and I, I can't thank them enough and the staff enough for all their work with this. Um, the, the process began, uh, in mid-September, and, uh, the, the guidelines were shared with the coordinators on the twenty-first. It's just that it's the process that we had, um. Then we had department discussions with the staff input on September twenty-third. Coordinators presented the budgets to administration, um, from October fifth through the thirteenth. Um, we had a CPP budget meeting, um, to discuss the cuts, um, for a half-day on October fourteenth. Um, and then we met with the coordinators individually to discuss department needs, um, as this process was going forward. Um, we had three, uh, rounds of budget cuts, and I'll be sharing that slide in a minute. And it comes to the final proposed budget today. The major areas of the cuts were technology and textbooks, and, um, you know, the technology piece, we had multiple discussions with Josh and, and Martha Campbell at the high school, and, and, and Jessica, even to see what we can, um, push off to next year, and, you know, we had to make the cuts, and we're confident after talking with Jamie and Josh, that, you know, we have a plan in place to address the technology needs, um, in the coming years. Um, and then the textbook piece, there's a, there was a, a lot of cuts in textbooks. Um, and we're gonna have to think about how, how we're gonna utilize textbooks in the future. Uh, there, there was a lot of requests, and the coordinator said we can get by another year, and, you know, I, I just wanna make note that, you know, we're, we're gonna have to face this textbook issue, um, as a school, and, and come up with a plan, because there's some significant investments that are gonna have to be made in textbooks in the coming years. Um, so the pieces that aren't included, uh, when we look at, at, thanks, Jamie. Um, when we started the, the original budget, um, you know, the, we, we have the, the sound in the classrooms, um, that the teachers can turn on their, their sound machines and put a microphone on. We were, we were gonna try to include that. We've been piecemealing it, or they've been piecemealing it for a number of years. Um, some have sound, others don't. Um, some have, um, they need AV upgrades. Um, so there's, there's a lot of pieces that have to be put into the classrooms. Um, then there's electrical needs in the music theory sound room, um, the auditorium sound. Um, I, from what I understand, it was never finished, um, when the renovation was, was completed. Um, auditorium lighting, they wanted to upgrade to LED lights, um, the chorus room, infrastructure sound. Um, iPads, um, for staff members. We don't have enough iPads to go around, and they're using it for instructional purposes now. Um, remote classroom, um, equipment, uh, we were hoping to have, uh, a pilot, so putting owls in the class, in, in a classroom or a conference room, so we can have a remote classroom set up to see if it would work if we ever have to go down that road. And then, uh, the, the textbooks request, social studies, science, and English, they did a lot of cuts to their budgets in textbooks. So this is the budget, um, reduction. So the first round was seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, and you can see there, it was the science textbooks, um, the tuition between the Hartford Career Center. And looking at that, uh, Jamie and I thought that we could reduce that a little bit, so, um, we took a reduction there. Athletics, Megan sharpened her pencil, and she reduced some of the athletic expenditures. Social studies textbooks, um, online services and speaking with Martha and Jess, um, and Josh. Um, there was some changes made for, for services there, al- along with the firewall services that we were using, and the e-procurement, um, services that the district was using, and, and Zoom licenses. So there was a lot of technology cuts there. On the second round of cuts, that's when the point four position came up, and the educational assistant position, um, came up. And Megan, um, we negotiated, and the strength and conditioning coach, uh, we reduced the hours that we were requesting for that position. Um, and that was to go in line with the, the, the weight room being redone. And then after the board meeting a few weeks ago, we went back to the, to the coordinators, and um, we came up with an additional twenty-six thousand dollars in cuts, and again, it was the field trips and textbooks, um, where we were making significant savings. So our total cuts at the high school come out to about a hundred and eighty-six, well, a hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that's it.
Thanks, Jim.
You know, as, as we go forward, we're, we're gonna have to, um, we're, we're gonna have to come up with a plan for textbook replacements.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
So there are, as we're building, um, you know, the budgets from version to version to version, I will say that the dollar amounts that they're sharing with you may not tie out exactly to the penny, you know, back to the differences in the versions, because at the same time, we in the finance committee realm, I mean, the finance realm are making adjustments and updates, you know, to the benefit sections. Uh, so if you, if you go back and you're, you know, you like to number crunch, and you run the numbers, and they don't come in exactly, you know, give me a ring, and I can walk you through it. Uh, anyway, at the end of the day, the high school budget summary is here. Again, it's by function, not by object code. The increase for the high school is approximately two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, or one point eight one percent over last year, and it represents just below one percent of the Dresden District's total budget growth this year. As, as I mentioned before, there are a lot of changes within, um, the teaching salary lines for track advancements at the high school. Uh, totaling in base salary wages about, it was just under or just over, cuz there's been, uh, some additions, around fifty thousand dollars. Um, so the proposed total budget, we had a budget increase guideline of three percent. Again, we had the, uh, revenue challenge there. We had adopted a budget last year, just over twenty-seven, well, uh, just under twenty-eight million at twenty-seven million eight hundred, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars for all three mini budgets put together. We're proposing for twenty-one, twenty-two, a budget of twenty-eight million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is an increase of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, or one point three seven percent. We are below the corridor, approximately four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So what does that mean? This is a most important page in the budget building process. We put everything together here. We then take a look at revenues, and we see the difference- And we see the differences in the revenue streams, the changes that cause us to go back and rebuild the budgets two, three, four times. You can see the sixth grade tuition challenge here of seven hundred and twenty thousand lower. That was, again, a culmination of three different factors. High school tuition students, we're, we're going to be down. We have taken the last couple of years' numbers and adjusted them downward due mainly to the fact that some of our sending schools in Vermont have pulled back a bit. We believe this is an Act forty six related issue. Our other local sources, this fifty seven thousand dollars was the money that we had, the one and only fund, reserve fund balance that we had for Dresden, as they're not allowed. But it happened once and they put money aside. And then we've been sitting on it for many, many, many years. We decided to pull it out this year to use it to offset the first payment for the Dresden turf field. So that will go away because there's, there's no more reserve funds there. The other change was the change in the state sources, which is the monies that we get. The, the source for the change, the, the reduction is the money to offset the large building project that was embarked on in two thousand two, two thousand three. Every year, New Hampshire pays you when you have a large project. They don't anymore, they've suspended the program. But back then, they pay you over a period of time that matches the length of your bond. And it goes down a little bit every year. So you can see our revenues were down, projected to be down, seven hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars or almost seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars or eleven percent lower. That is a difficult problem to overcome, hence why we went back and rebuilt the budget. And right now, the net assessment is breaking down to fourteen million, eight hundred and eighty four thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars to Hanover, which is two point nine four percent above Hanover's prior year. Assess to Norwich is seven million, four forty four, one fifty five, approximately six hundred and eighty six thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars or ten point one seven percent above last year. There's two things that make this dynamic occur in the assessment. One of them is the difference in our student A D M, that's average daily membership. We use a formula for Dresden's assessment. I'm going to go to the next page because it speaks about it here. We use a formula where we look at the seventh through twelfth graders. And we use the New Hampshire ratified D O E report. And then we look at them as a percentage of the whole total. And these percentages are shifting for the twenty one, twenty two school year by about a percent and a half. In going back here, the other dynamic that occurs here is that when we did the large bond and changes to the high school and built the Richmond Middle School, construction funds were bestowed by both towns. In Vermont, they give you the lump sum, or they did back then, they give you the lump sum upfront. And you invest it and then you pull money off every year and it goes against your expenses. Because Dresden is a New Hampshire school district, those funds can't be shown on this budget. So those funds offset costs in the Norwich district's direct budget. Because Dresden is a New Hampshire school district, the New Hampshire dollar amount, which we spoke about up here, is directly offset to Hanover's assessment portion. Okay, that's why if you take this number of increase and you do it by the percentages down here of what the assessment shares are supposed to be, they don't match exactly. And that's why. And I will continue to tell everybody that every year because I always get that question. It's a little confusing. You can look on exhibit eight in the budget books, items that are attached, and that explains how the breakdown works and how the dollar amount for New Hampshire's building aid is, is factored in, okay? The, okay, last slide. I have not, sorry, I'll go back up here for one second, just kidding, almost last slide. I have not shown the effect of what the assessments will do on the tax rates here at the Dresden meeting. The tax rate assessment, the tax rate are shared and the projections are shared at each one of the district towns at Norwich and Hanover. Hanover will be in flux a little bit as we need to go back and take a look in January at the enrollment numbers that we'll be sending into Richmond Middle School. Right now, we have enrollments that are based on, sorry to do this to y'all, are based on seventy four. That was our early projection. We know two new students have enrolled in the fifth grade as of this point. And we have three students in the fifth grade that are presently being homeschooled or are at other private school locations that will be rejoining us if we are in a more normal school year and the pandemic is a bit under control. So that would mean that this number would increase by five students. So it's a very circular thing when we deal with expenses and revenues between all the districts. Because what that means is that the expenditures in Hanover will go up a little bit for the five extra additional students because we, we vet that in January. That also means this dollar amount here of sixth grade revenue, one point seven million, almost one point eight, will go up. When this revenue goes up, these assessments go down a little bit, okay? So when we bring you the budget for ratification in January, all of this be updated for those meetings. Okay, last slide. Thank you for your patience, everybody's been great. There are other potential warrant articles that we will most likely be bringing forward. There is a Dresden Hanover service staff negotiations going on right now. We have a meeting tomorrow. We hope to T A the rest of the agreement soon. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow or if it'll be early in January. But it will be something hopefully will be ready by the date that you will need to ratify for Hanover and Dresden for warrant articles in later in January. We also have been talking about a technology infrastructure project. Josh has shared that many, many times. It can be seen out on our budget committee websites. And if somebody has a question, I'm happy to pull it up here. Also, a sixth grade tuition potential methodology discussion and or warrant article change. And that's going to be discussed a little bit later tonight in our meeting.
And there we have it. Thanks, Jamie. I'm sure there's some questions. I see Tim's hand up already.
I was just going to say that that, the number of the sixth grade is also incredibly important for us in terms of projecting the number of sections that we need. Because I know that question has come up. And when we get closer to that eighty student, that really makes the difference between sort of a fifteen, sixteen person class and a twenty person class, which doesn't seem like a lot unless you add people at mid-year. And the other thing that happens is that the fewer number of sections we have, the less flexibility there is. So it never adds up to twenty in each of the classes. And you get overloaded fairly quickly. That's what we went through last year. And that's the main reason that we decided to stay with five sections academically in the sixth grade going forward, despite what looks like a lone number.
And it will also drive up the net assessment in Hanover on the Hanover side of things, not on the Dresden side per se, but on the Hanover side. So, yeah, I, I think to the extent that, I mean, hopefully we'll have firmer numbers for January. But I think definitely important to, to keep in mind that five students can represent almost a hundred thousand dollars there, right? So, or exactly a hundred thousand dollars, so that's a big swing. Dan?
Yeah, so Jim, I, I'd like you to say a little bit more about the textbook problem. So, I mean, from my perspective, textbooks are, are crucial. If the textbooks are out of date, I mean, whatever, to make a cartoon of it, then the teachers aren't teaching relevant stuff. And that's especially worrying for a science textbook, which I would like to believe at some point, the ways in which science is presented have gotten better. And I certainly, I certainly don't want our students to not get the best kind of science education. I'm also sensitive to the social studies curriculum especially. We've had, there's so much that's been done lately surfacing all kinds of issues in the ways in which social studies has been taught. I think it feeds directly into our equity kinds of concerns. And that's a really big number in terms of what we're not spending on social studies. The English books, I can't speak to them if it's a question of just getting a better version of Pride and Prejudice. Of course, we don't need to do that. So it's the, but there may be other books that, that you have in mind where the same kinds of, of, of issues are surfaced. And again, it might feed into an equity thing. If you're telling me that we're not buying books written by people of color, people from various underrepresented groups, I'm troubled by that. And I like to believe a quick back of the envelope calculation says that buying the textbooks is another two tenths of a percent. I'd like to believe that we could stomach a two tenths of a percent increase in the budget to address that problem. Or if we really can't, that there's got to be some kind of, you know, part of capital expenses that we could forestall for a year. Because a year in a kid's education is significant. But, you know, if the bleachers are a little rusty or there's a wall that isn't painted, I think that's not as important. So thanks for being, telling me a little bit more about that and.
So I'll start with science. When we look at science, the non-negotiable for science was replacement of the entire, of chemistry textbooks. So that was a non-negotiable that we had to, that we have to purchase for next year. In that, the science department also requested a new set of physics honors textbooks. And after speaking with Tom Hermanson, the department coordinator, he suggested that we can go another year. The, we, we, we're going to have to talk about replacement biology textbooks in the, in the near future. And they also had a new set of chemistry honors textbooks in that, in that original proposal. And he said that we can, we can table that for a year. In his rationale, he's stating that the textbooks are approaching ten years. And that they don't have a lot of digital materials to go along with them. So his priority for this coming school year was the, the chemistry textbooks after we went back and forth a few times. And we're going to work out a comprehensive plan moving forward. When we look at social studies, there is the, the replacement of one text, and that's very, various texts across different classes. They were requesting the Essential World History in a digital format for next year. And there's a religion class and they were asking for textbooks for the religion class that, that we put into the budget. And then an American government digital access textbook for fifty one hundred dollars. She said that we could table that for next year. And then there was another digital access for United States history that she said we could also table. We have texts, we have textbooks, but they were requesting digital texts. There's a human geography textbook that we were going to table for next year. And that was basically it for those two subject areas. Math has put requests through for digital textbooks. And the, the piece with the, with the digital textbooks, math has a high digital, has a high textbook request. But there's, I believe there are four-year licenses or six-year licenses on the digital textbooks. So, you know, when we look at the school, you know, we might want to think about having some type of a replacement cycles if we're going with these digital texts, because there are savings from year to year between departments if we're going to go to a digital format. And then I, I discussed this at one of the, the budget meetings, you know, philosophically, do we want to have digital texts for every single area? I, I don't know personally, I don't know if I would want digital textbooks or digital books in English. I think that there's some advantages to the printed media. Are studying or, or reading or, but that's a discussion that we're going to have to have as a school and, and as a division, you know, working with Robin on that. So they were the, the major pieces of, of the textbooks. I'm confident that in conversation with the coordinators, that we can get through another year. But we're going to have to have the discussion next year, what we're going to do with the textbooks.
Sorry, so Jim, what I'm not, what I'm not hearing from you is like, I mean, are these, are these literally the old textbooks put online? Or are these, I mean, a ten-year-old?
No, I, I would have to, I would have to think that they're, that they're updated, updated materials, updated curriculum and content that goes into the books.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, well, I'm, to be honest, I'm, I'm not actually not agnostic about the medium, but we don't have to get into that. But I, what, what, what I, what I, what I'm not, I mean, just to repeat what I said, I mean, a ten-year-old textbook on government, it just.
That, that wasn't social studies that was requesting that. That was, that stated that, that was the science department that stated that, that their books were coming up to ten years.
So I hate, I hate to cut you guys off on this, but I think we're kind of getting into the weeds on some of this. I think this falls into the area where we set some budgets and we trust our administrators and department heads to give us their priorities.
Okay, but it's so, so I, I, I am going to push back though, that I do feel like we can absorb two tenths of a percent or some fraction of two tenths to update our textbooks. That, that, that just strikes me as, as a real need. That is the core of our, of our, of our educational materials.
And I think so, that, I think that feedback is, is very valuable. I think, again, I would say, you know, if, if we have two tenths of a percent to give back, then I think we would task Jim and his team with figuring out where they most need to give that, to, to take that money back. It may be textbooks, I don't know. But I think that falls into the category of, you know, what would be your next two tenths of a percent add back? So, but thanks, as always for the feedback, Dan, on that. I forget who was next, I think it might have been Kim.
Kelly, so the chair of the Dresden Budget Committee. And I just wanted to applaud the administration and staff for really not only meeting our board guidelines, but also understanding and adapting to the challenging times, particularly as we really digested the revenue challenge and really kind of delivering a version of a budget that still tries to get at the best education for our students, but also at a level that our community will likely support. You know, do note that our Norwich neighbors in this version has a ten point one seven percent assessment increase. And I just, for, for those either new or just, just to understand that Dresden is about half of the total Norwich school assessment. So just to kind of give you a sense of where that, that number could likely fall. Likely fall. Um, you know, this is not an easy task or request from our administrators to achieve. In particular. Um, we have those various headwinds that really all of our schools across the state are facing with, um, the increased retirement plan, and actually our towns as well. And we already had, you know, union contracts in place, um. Which is helpful for, for long-term planning, but, um, not in, in, you know, in a COVID crisis, right? So it does kind of, um. Is more challenging. And the budget process really is not over, so I, I hope, um, that, you know, I, you know, I appreciate. From a budget committee perspective, you know, hearing the full board's comments on ways that we can improve. Um, I think there are some. You know, expected changes coming in January, like Jamie mentioned with tuition can kind of have a little bit of a change. But also I think we're going to hear later this evening about kind of where are we in the current budget and. Um, I, I have a question out there of whether that carry forward number, which is a revenue number, um, you know, is that at the right level or, um. Is it something more favorable? So I, I don't, there's a lot still to be done. Um, and I think that. You know, we can kind of look at some of these priority projects. Or, you know, in my opinion, honestly, some of these are more bread and butter, field trips and textbooks, but, um, you know, just to kind of get a sense for, um. Kind of what the total level of funding, um, would be kind of helpful for this meeting too. So as we. Uncover and kind of develop, you know, another version, um, kind of where some of those pain points would be, would be really helpful. So. And finally, uh, the biggest pain point is the sixth grade tuition. We will be talking about that later this, this evening and, you know, really looking forward to. Finding a solution there too. So.
Thanks, Kim. And yeah, to Kim and Dan's point, I mean, I think, um, any of the feedback that we get is valuable for our school administrators who, who will definitely take that into consideration as we go through these final rounds of budget. Um, additions or, or subtractions. So, um, thank you guys. Uh, Ben.
Uh, sorry, uh, Dan got to the crux of most of my questions. I just wanted to thank again everyone for holding to the line. And I agree with Jim's point about having a scheduledized replacement system as a long-term textbook thing. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Garrett.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to necessarily pile on it, Dan, but I do agree in that, just as a quick context for everybody, including Dan, I think so on our last Dresden budget call, you know, we did send the high school and Jim back to. You know, kind of one more round of cuts and, um, to the textbook issue, I guess if there's one thing that came up tonight that was loud and clear to me, I'm not sure if I'm gonna sleep so well knowing. The, in potential impact of those textbooks, because I heard it come up, you know, a, a few times from Jim, and it sounds like there's true concern there. So I do think. You know, to Kim's point, if there's a little fine tuning to be done, I think that's probably something that, you know. Maybe in my mind, having seen this budget develop, it might, we might have overshot a little bit now on that textbook cut, um, having sent Jim back to. You know, cut again. So anyways, I think that's something we should. Maybe think about, because to Dan's point, I mean, it's fifty K and a, you know. On that, um, you know, fifty, five thou, sorry, it's fifty thousand on a fifteen million dollar budget, right? So it's. It, it's a pretty small number. Um, so it's, it's just something I think we should. Maybe look at again, because I think it's all bothering everyone around the table.
Thanks, Garrett. And I, I will just reiterate my point, um, before I call on Neil, but I, I think, and, and it may be that we add back in those textbooks at the same time. I guess I want to kind of. Acknowledge that, you know, it's, it's Jim and his teams, it's their job to sort of look at that critically and say, yes, we need maybe forty-five thousand of that, or maybe we need thirty-five thousand of that, or. Where are we at with those textbook decisions, right? Um, and then i- if we authorize it, sort of putting that money where they think it's most useful. For them.
No, I absolutely agree. Maybe it's just kind of back and, you know, maybe Jim says, you know, li- li- fifteen will get us there, right? So we're not in such a bad space. That, that, that's my point. I think it's bothering everybody on this call. So I think that's one point where, you know, we went. Too far maybe now and used to come back just a little. Anyways, that's my point.
Awesome. Thanks, Garrett. Neil?
Sorry, thanks, Kelly. Um, first I want to say a huge thank you to, um, the budget committee and, and the administrative team for putting this together. Um, this was some. Really good work, I think, to get the numbers, um, you, you know, where we think we ought to be, um. Especially given the current, um, you know, economic conditions related to the pandemic and. Certainly with the Norwich assessment, um, going up as much as it is, I am, I am loathe to recommend additions to the budget. Nevertheless. Um, I do want to ask a question. Um, and one of the things that struck me over the past, um, several months is. The, um, social, emotional and mental health aspect that the pandemic has had on students. And, uh, there've been several articles even within the Valley News over the past few weeks related to this, and I'm wondering. Um, if administration was thinking about that as they put the budget together, um, taking a look at whether or not. We forecast an increased need for counseling or social or emotional support systems for the. I'm not even talking about the current year, because I think there's maybe a case to be made there, but for next year. So when school starts up again, you know, hoping we're back to what we had previously considered to be normal schooling. During the budgeting process, was there consideration given to perhaps an increased need for those types of services next year?
I think we definitely, that's something that we look at at a lens in the middle school all the time. Um, and that's one of the, again, one of the main reasons why we tried to keep our staffing level as high as we possibly could. And then a lot of the social emotional work that we're finding is better done and, and with sort of more people in smaller classes. Uh, it gives more of an opportunity to, um, have students connect with somebody that they feel close to. Um. That's important. And we had not gone to the point where we are looking specifically at increased counseling. Just because that's one of those positions that's hard to do on an interim basis or sort of a one-year basis. But yeah, that, that's definitely the, the lens that we're sort of looking at, and we're looking at it in terms of many of the different things that we do. So we're rethinking, for example, we're rethinking our homework policy. Um, we're rethinking. Um, we're looking at sort of one of the positive outgrowths that we never foresaw of cohorting this year is that we have. Some cohorts have really formed strong and supportive bonds among the students, just because they're with the same people all day, every day. Um, so we're trying to figure out if that's something that we can, uh, leverage for next year as well. But it's something that we're looking at. I would love to say that we, you know, it would be great if we could add a few more people in terms of the counseling staff. I don't know. How that would work, but it's something that we're definitely looking at. I think that's a great point, yeah.
Uh, I'll take a stab from the high school, um, perspective on that. Um, and Julie could. And also she's got the historical perspective on, on that. But when we were, went back to the, to the coordinators for the budget, because I know there was a significant discussion on field trips. And we felt that the field trips were, were really important for next year, um, to, to get the students out. Um, and to help them with that. Um, the, the counseling department, uh, we didn't make any cuts in that department. And Julie, I don't know if you want to add anything about that with.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think in the past few years, you know, we had requested a new counselor over a five-year period and. A couple of years we, ago, we got that. Um, and then we, um, added mental health as part of our RTN program. We changed or switched over some of those fifths last year and put them towards mental health. And so I feel like we have a really bang-up mental health team with Tom Gamble and Devon Volk and Chris Seibel. Um. And then we also have, you know, this counseling department that's, I, I think, well-staffed. You could always. It feels like we could always use more in this area, and as the years go on, it always feels like you could use more, but I think we're really lucky with what we have. And then I think the side benefits are of like Tim said to COVID, if, you know, you're always looking for the silver linings, at least I am. Um, and is the advisory that we have this year and the work that, um, that people have done, um, with also Devon Wright on advisory. And having students co-horted or having those eight people or nine people to have lunch with every day has really added. To, you know, the social fabric of the school and the safety net of, of each other. And. I, um, with, with the schedule that we're proposing for next year, assuming that it's what we end up with. Rather than going back to having just once a week common ground. The hope is to stick with advisory and not only have an advisory circle, which has a social emotional component to it. But we've added an advisory lunch so that we're breaking bread together at least once a week with those group of people and not just. The one time to do the curriculum piece. And so I think that'll be really great going forward in terms of the connections there. I know. I mean, they're, they're huge, like even to the point where, and I told the staff the story the other day. Where I was missing on Thursday, not like in a bad way missing, but I wasn't there. And, um. And my advisory called me during advisory. So just want you to know we're all here, someone's taking care of us, but we just want to make sure you were okay. Huge, right? That just wouldn't have happened before. And so I think that's helpful. It's not necessarily a mental health counselor. Um, but it's a setup that, that I think is better and for mental health. So, and I think, I think we're really lucky with the people we have. So we didn't ask for more going forward.
I do believe there was one slight adjustment, though, in the high school FTE count. It was the point four that we had initially last year redirected funds that we normally would hire consultants. And instead we're. Death. So that was in, that was in this budget, the point four. It shows in the special ed teaching section. But we had made that change because it was, it's not really unbudgeted. It had been budgeted as a consulting fees. And instead we're keeping the person on staff.
Yeah, Jay.
Uh, Neil, to your question, uh, we're also preparing sort of a. An update for the board and the community for January on both academic and social emotional impacts of, of, well, actually just a kind of a status update on the school year. And, uh, we'll have data for you on that as well.
Great, thanks, Jay. And I, Rhett, I did see your hand up. I don't know if Jamie, um, added what you were gonna say with the point four.
Yeah, uh, between Julie and Jamie, they covered what I was gonna speak to, so.
Awesome, thanks.
Nothing, nothing additional.
All right, thank you. Other questions on the budget? All right. Oh, oh, members of the public, okay, um, Kari Asmus. Kari, I think you're muted, but here, let me try to unmute you. Kari, you have to unmute yourself, I think. Kari, can you unmute yourself?
Sometimes Kari has some technology lag.
Okay, so I will, um, move on. Kari, I'll come back to you. Um, and, uh, I will move on to Steve McConnell. Full disclosure, this is my husband. Steve, you have to unmute yourself.
Hello. Is that better?
We can hear you.
Hi there. My name's Steve McConnell. I am the head coach for track and field at the high school, boys and girls. Uh, winter and spring track and field. Um, I just wanted to, uh, talk to you tonight to ask about. Uh, repairs and or resurfacing of the track. I didn't see that as a line item. I don't see it in the warrant article, so I wanted to, to ask about it, see if it's there. Hopefully I missed it. Hopefully it's being planned for. But I just wanted to sort of let you all know that it's out there and it's a need. Um, just for a bit of background. The track team is one of the largest teams in the district. Very committed this year with no chance of a, uh, competitive season and no. Uh, chance of running inside, not being welcome in the school. Thirty-four kids signed up to run outdoors all winter. Even though they won't be able to compete or have any meets or anything, so the kids are really into it. Um, and so, uh. I like to try to do what we can for them. Uh, the normal lifespan for, for a track surface is seven to ten years. Uh, probably closer to seven years in our climate, given the freezing and dying and freezing and dying and. Our track surface was laid down in two thousand and six. So about half of my team is older than the track surface, um, when it should be replaced every seven or eight years. And that leads to a couple of problems. A safety issue of, uh, the, the repetitive, uh, running on the track. A normal track surface is cushiony, the rubberized track. Our track has long ago lost any cushion it has, or that it had. And, uh, that contributes to a lot of overuse injuries, uh, shin splints, ankles, knees and such. Also, um, a, a temporary patch was done to a, a part of the track that, that was frost-heaved. And that has failed pretty definitively. And now there's holes in the track. Which is, you know, also worrisome. The track's home to not just the track team, uh, in winter this year and spring. But also other teams that use the track, uh, the middle school team, team uses the track, members of the community, you know, including Olympians and world champions and such. So it really is a community resource, uh, and it's a bit of a, a liability right now, honestly. So. I know, well, I know I've been talking for a long time about getting it replaced. I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar and, and hope that, uh, something's in the works. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I don't think anybody wanted to address that. If not. I see.
So I guess I'll address it because Tony's not here. It is not in this budget build. If we were going to resurface the track, everything that we can cut, that's considered non-essential going into the economic environment we're going into, has been cut. From buildings and site improvements. Uh, it was my understanding that items such as this. Were going to be reviewed by the athletic director along with the athletic committee that we, um. That we started holding meetings about again. Um, so it's not on my radar because it hasn't been brought forward by them. And I would think it would be a bond article. If it was to be brought forward as, um, that's a big project. So I'm sorry, Steve. Um, that's all I have. I'll follow up with Tony. To see if anything was brought to him. Uh, I do know that we had it cleaned and we did do quite a bit of repairs to it, and so. If those have failed, we'll take another look at that again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe I'm unmuted?
Yes, Kari.
Okay, thank you. And unfrozen. I, I do know how to unmute, but sometimes I just disappear. So thank you.
I figured.
My name is Kari Asmus, and for those of you who don't know me, um, I'm the chair of the Hanover Finance Committee. I also served on the school board for nine years. And so, um, very much appreciate the process, uh, that you're going through. Um, and. When the finance committee met yesterday, um, that sentiment was echoed by everyone. Um, I want to say that of the budget presentation tonight, it's been very helpful, um, to see all the thought behind. The three categories of requests not included, uh, the budget to budget reductions, which in the past we would call those cuts, the things in the first category. Were sort of reductions to the increase. Um, but of course, even just knowing that you're looking at budget to budget reductions and knowing that sometimes. Not all expenses need to go forward. It's, it helps us to, um, confidently explain to the community that that. That you went through that process. And then also the third category, the priorities, so that you're very clear on if you are going to add back X. What is the top priority? So, you know, I just, um. Can't say thank you enough for, for that. Um, I, having gone over the, um. Budget somewhat in the finance committee, um, one comment that came up was also the appreciation for being very conservative on the tuition. Revenues, um, that seemed like a prudent approach. Um, there was some concern, um, about looking at the. about looking at the enrollments. We, I know have, the finance committee has talked about this before, that it's helpful, we think, to understand the budget to budget changes in enrollment and, and can comment staffing. So for example, in the packet on page four, it says middle school enrollments on an actual without homeschoolers are projected to decline by 18. But if you look at the budget, which is what the staffing we should have in the budget for, it's a 38 student decline. And then I know that this year in particular with COVID, it's very difficult to figure out what next year's enrollments are going to be. My point just is that it helps us understand if there is a explanation that's based on budget to budget rather than actual to budget, because it's more of an apples to apples. So I don't know if we can hear something more about that in January. But again, just my overview is that people are, we're very pleased that you have taken the, the financial environment that many in our towns find ourselves in. Also, the pressures being faced by, for example, the town of Hanover budget, et cetera. In, in coming back with a reduced budget of your own. And we, we just sit here and we'll, we'll listen to what, what more you have to say. And I don't know if any other committee members are listening in tonight that want to speak, but somebody may want to put a finer point on my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie, go ahead. Thanks, Kari.
I'm sorry. I don't know how to raise my hand when it's so many folks.
You're doing great. I see you.
Okay. I would say that for the January meeting, I know it's not in the packet this year, and we did, we did put it in last year, that we hope to bring a breakdown of sections and or class sizes like we did last year. We just honestly have not had the time to look into doing that. And we could so you could see what the differences might look like. I don't know if that would be helpful. I would look to my principals to see. I think that could be done. The high school is the most difficult one, obviously, because the, the, the number of electives. So normally what they do is they share what the I think second semester signups look like to get kind of an idea of what it looks like moving forward. So that's perhaps something we could embark on and, and share at the January meeting.
Jamie, I, I don't have any problem doing that. The one caveat that I would put forth is that because of our cohorting, the numbers are, are strange, just because we have to put, you have to build the schedule so that everybody stays together as much as possible and then switches with math. So it, it's not going to sort of all align the way it would in a normal year. So that's again, just one of those other things that this year has done to us is that we do have some very small cohorts and even the people in the building were like, well, why don't we just switch them to the other cohort? It, it's not as simple as that, because then you have to change everything about it. And it makes it really complicated. So we can definitely run those numbers, but just know that they're not a reflection of what next year's schedule would be.
Whatever you think would be useful for us to have just a better understanding, because I would say that was one, one area that wasn't necessarily lining up for us.
Okay, thank you all. Are there any other questions on the budget? If not.
I do have a question, question. And that was just, do we know whether or not there is still the potential for a sabbatic leave out there or is that door closed?
I see Anissa shaking her head. Anissa?
Yeah, the, the date is passed for a staff member in Dresden to apply for sabbatical.
Okay. And does any, can anybody speak to Hanover by chance?
It's all of, so our CSDC, our Central Staff Development Committee is joint and it's all Hanover and Dresden. And we would have looked at a sabbatical in November, I believe, those people will come forward. So no sabbatical for this upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
One less budget question mark.
Right, exactly.
Awesome. Thank you, Kari. Any other, Kari, did you have any other questions? I apologize. I don't need to move off.
Yes, no, I, I believe that was my only question, question.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And thank you to the finance committee members as well. Any other questions on the budget this evening? So we will, we have a couple, I think, Kim, one more budget committee meeting or two more coming up?
We have at least one, and I think we'll go from there.
Okay, so at least one more. So if you have any other thoughts or comments between now and then, please feel free to share them. Neil?
Do you know then when we would have information on any potential warrant or bond articles related to technology?
I don't know if you're asking me.
I always direct my questions to you.
Thank you, Neil. We, I think hopefully would have that by January. Jamie, do you know if that is indeed true?
Yeah, absolutely. You have to have that by January. I have been in contact with Renelle Lahoullier. And I have secured the checklists for everything that we have to do in regards to having warrants brought up for a bond. And I'm moving forward gathering all of that data. I'm working with Josh, who's working with the, oh gosh, I'm blanking, the E-Rate Funds Consultant to see, you know, what, what can be done in that respect. But I'm going to move forward with the bond information based on the numbers that we had. Our legal counsel has said that you can do that and then you just don't draw, you know, whatever the offsets are, you don't draw the difference. And then they just, they disallow the difference and you never, you know, you don't write it based on what you don't need, basically. So, so for the next meeting, Neil, we should have all of that wording and all of that information worked out.
And will we have a sense of tax, potential tax implications at that point as well? Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Good question, Neil. Any other questions on budget? I will just point out, I know we're going to talk about the sixth grade tuition ongoing discussion committee work momentarily, but did just want to point out at this point that that will not have a budgetary impact next year, should that go on to the on the, the warrant articles this year. Kim?
That also is true for the technology warrant article, at least what it's currently drafted as.
Okay, super. That's good information. Thank you, Kim. Okay, so moving along to the rest of our agenda this evening. Casey, you've been patiently waiting through all of our budget musings. Thank you for sticking with us.
Hi, so the last time I talked, I spoke about the mascot and the mascot motion that was brought about changing it for Hanover High School. And we haven't talked about that in a whole group meeting. We've had a lot of leadership and executive meetings about it to kind of decide how we want to better get full schools, full school feedback, because it's definitely become a larger conversation. And so that motion is being brought again this week. And we're talking about having some way to get feedback using kind of advisory discussions and a form after that. But we're waiting to see what we want to do with that for after break. And then during that time, a lot of other motions and things that we needed to get done were brought. So first of all, Ms. Stevenson originally brought a motion about the dress code to counsel. And it ended up going to JCon instead to use that. So the judiciary committee kind of brought back a motion to counsel based on a specific case. And that motion ended up being passed. There was definitely a lot of debate on whether or not some language was included and a lot of students or a group of students met with the ACLU about the motion. So we're really happy with that. And then also the scheduling committee presented the schedule that Ms. Stevenson also referred to previously. But that was brought to counsel and presented and then people asked questions. And then also I presented with a group of teachers and community members to the staff. And so the vote for the new schedule for the 21, 22 year will be next week from Wednesday to Friday.
Great. Thank you, Casey. Are there any questions for Casey this evening? Dan?
Hi, Casey. So can, I, I'd like to hear just a tiny bit more about the scheduling conversation. I, I understand that there's a hybrid model on the table. Can't remember what you called them, thin periods and block periods, skinny periods, can't remember. And I, my sense is that hybrids can be complicated. And, and I, I would like you to say a little bit more about that, but I have a suggestion because I, my understanding is that there may be students who because of the way that the classes fall, there might be classes they can't take because they just don't match up. And I would offer that if you took this year's class schedule, all the choices that all the students made and tried to see if, how many people would not get their schedule in a hybrid schedule, that would actually be a sanity test for whether or not the hybrid schedule might cause problems for students. Or take last year's schedule in a sort of more normal period. So that would, that's a suggestion, but maybe you could say a little bit more about the conversation.
Yes, I can. So I actually, I was the student member starting my sophomore year on this committee. So it's been going on, this committee has been going on for three years. I think the larger scheduling conversation has been going on for 10 or more years. But essentially, we have been kind of going back and forth between block schedules and shorter periods, because there's definitely classes that lend more towards longer periods and classes like Spanish, some math classes or languages, not just Spanish, that lent more towards shorter periods, more touches during the week. And so the skinny block model was actually one of the greatest compromises, I think, in terms of our committee, because up until that point, it was really hard to kind of come to a consensus and have everyone behind one schedule because some teachers felt that they just couldn't teach in that block schedule because of kind of the way that their class works or the way that their curriculum works. And so that's why there's the skinnies and blocks. And we haven't, from what I know, no one has tested what you, we're just talking about, Ms. Stevenson might know differently. But I don't, I guess that's like kind of the background behind the skinnies and blocks. But they would have, the skinnies would have 200 minutes a week and the blocks would have two 10 minutes a week. And right now they've sent out, classes are requesting a certain, like either the shorter or longer periods based on the course, not based on the specific class. And so right now there are 60, I believe, requests for like thinner periods. And then I want to say 123. I'm not completely positive with that number, but the last time I looked is around 123 requests for block, block periods for courses.
Yeah, Julie?
And I just wanted to add, so we did exactly that today, Dan. We ran, so I'm not, we is, I'm using that broadly. Martha Campbell, who's an absolute superstar, has run the schedule five times for us this year and, and to redone the schedule, we normally do it once. So now she's really, really good at it. So we're worried that we're, we want this schedule and it's not going to be able to happen and it's going to cause lots of conflicts. And so we asked her to try to do it. So today we went through that process. And the, the numbers we got from it were 94% of the requests were satisfied of students, 68 without conflicts. And so it sounds like a lot of people had conflicts, but that's like our normal first run every spring, like in March when we do it, that's actually a good number. So, because we have the same conflicts you're talking about with the schedule we have now, where if it's a single tenant, a student can't take it. So right now it looks like it's starting out to be exactly the same as the schedule we would have run the seven period day or the schedule this year. So we're hopeful because we would love it to work, but we were worried and she was really worried. And so she went ahead and just tried it on, in our sandbox. And it seems to, it seems to be okay, maybe. I hope that helps.
Thanks, Julie. Lisa?
Yes, I hesitate to ask this question, having just gone through the budget presentation. But I am wondering if in the discussion of the new schedule, Casey and Julie and Jim, I guess, if the, if the teachers, we talked about social and emotional support for the students. And I'm wondering if there's any support built into it for the teachers, because I'm assuming no matter what this new schedule looks like, it requires a different way of structuring your classes for either longer or shorter periods. And I just am wondering if there's been any talk of professional development to help teachers who need help in expanding to the new schedule or contracting to the new schedule, or if I'm just dreaming that there would even be money for that. And what you all are thinking on that issue. And I don't know if that's even been discussed, but it just occurs to me that the teachers might need some support too, as this new schedule rolls out.
I'm, I might let that question hang out there unless somebody wants to answer. I might, in fact, let Jim and Tim sort of roll that into their comments, if that's okay, when you guys do your reports, to the extent that that's rollable, I guess.
Kelly, can I add one thing, just because Martha just texted me, because obviously people are watching, so be careful what you say. It's actually better. Apparently it was 92% in the first round. Last year was 94 this time. And then she wrote a bunch of stuff about going crazy and running it five other ways with the skinny thing. And apparently it's doing even better in ways she can't imagine. So she'll correct me on that in a minute on the phone, but it's better. So it works.
Thanks, Julie. Did anybody else have questions specifically for Casey? And I'm sorry, Lisa, I just wanted to make sure that we were able to address questions to Casey.
Yeah, I, again, I don't know if I need an answer right now. It just was a question that occurred to me as I heard the presentation.
Thanks, Lisa. Anything else for Casey?
I will just, I, I will just reiterate, I spoke to part of the council later on, or late last week about council elections. And I just wanted to offer up the, the RMS Goose as a possible mascot for Hanover High School. So we have talked and we think that that would be a good thing that would transfer right over. We already have the logo, so it's already ready to go. So just as long as we're having the discussion, I wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks for your problem solving spirit, Tim, as always. Excellent. Any other questions for Casey this evening? All right, Casey, thank you so much. This is later than we usually keep you, so I really appreciate you sticking around with us tonight. And thank you to you and the entire council for the work that you're doing. Moving on to our principal reports, and Jim actually sent me this wonderful elaborate update. So if you guys refresh, there is an update now loaded into Board Docs. So you should be able to see Jim's. Yes, Jay?
Kelly, I'm just wondering if it'd be appropriate for, Julie has a report on the work of the Equity Committee as well. Rather than making her wait until my report at the end of the meeting, could we have her join the principals after their presentations?
Certainly. That's fine with me. Okay, so we'll start with Jim and then go to Tim and then have Julie. Does that sound fair to you, Julie? Yep, okay.
Just go ahead with Julie right after Jim. It makes sense.
Julie, go right now. I'm, I'm okay with Julie jumping into equity.
Well, one of you needs to talk. So, all right, let's start with Julie.
All right, I must look like I need sleep. So, so I just wanted to give you, it's a really quick update. As you know, the, we had an equity audit, which then told us that one of the major recommendations was that we embark on Equity PD as a district. And so we took that up and started this summer. And, and I told you the last time I talked to this group that we did a, the summer, the leadership group did a some work with Groundswell Change over the summer. And now we are going to meet a few times, starting in January with Groundswell Change's follow-up as a leadership group with them in terms of Equity PD. Our staff, if you didn't know, has been doing Equity PD. We started early this fall. We meet twice. We meet twice a month, one time as a whole district and one time with, we meet with RMS as the high school. And then Marion Cross meets with the Ray School the other time. A week is a follow-up to the all-district meeting each month. And we've been doing that. The training is really focused on DEI and multicultural education. And we've been looking at the last couple of times we've done breakout groups where we look at lesson plans in small groups and, and try to work to improve them through a multicultural lens. And we've been trying to pay attention to impact versus intent. And even with the lessons that, that we create, that we intend to be the right thing. And sometimes they are so very wrong. Our impact is not what we expected. So we've been talking about that. We're going to continue that the rest of the year. And the proposal, we have a proposal from Groundswell Change to potentially continue into the following year. And we're looking at that as a leadership group and what we can do or not do surrounding that. I think we're committed to the work. We just have to figure out how that plays out in terms of, you know, do we contract with someone? Do we do work within our schools with the knowledge that we gained from this year? You know, where, where are we going to land there? So it's been, it's been good to do. It's, it's hard in this year. And, you know, I wish it was live versus in, on Zoom. That would be helpful. And as you know, and you've probably heard from people, if you talk to people, is we don't have much time as a staff in, with all our COVID protocols, you know, trying to separate, always eating with students, which we love in many ways, but also don't have a whole lot of time. And so we're putting a significant effort, effort and time into this initiative, which we think is worthwhile. Obviously, we wouldn't do it if we didn't, but we don't have a lot of time. So this, you can see the stress on people's faces surrounding it. So anyway, so that, that's where we are. I don't know if people have questions. Lisa's part of the Equity Group too. And I think I saw Nicole as a, in attending this meeting. And she's been helping a lot at the high school and then helping with the whole group. So, yeah, so if you have questions, we're here to answer them.
Thanks, Julie. And I will just add that there is a summary that Nicole sent us with the, sort of a summary of the activities of the Equity Committee thus far that you can find in the superintendent's report. So if you look down in that portion, I think we kind of rearranged when we were having Julie talk. So it is available in the superintendent's report, if you want to look at that summary. Which is basically essentially what Julie just summarized for us. So are there questions for Julie? All right. Yes, Lisa?
Not a question, but just an addition that hopefully in the spring, we hope to have some parent and community workshops based on the work that the teachers and the leadership team are doing, so that the community can sort of all be on the same page. So look to these meetings and all the school updates for details, once those have been finalized.
Thank you, Lisa. And thanks to the entire district. And this is really a district-wide effort. And, and as Julie said, there has been tremendous time and energy and diligent effort put into this really important initiative. So I think this is, it's a, in my time on the board, I think it's the first time that the whole district has really participated in the same initiative this way. So I am grateful for that personally. So thank you, guys. Other questions for the Equity Work at this point? Okay, thank you. Jim?
Thank you.
The report.
Thank you. So I'm going to be brief on this, because it's, I could talk about the high school forever. But I do want to congratulate the high school, the Hanover High School Quiz Bowl team. We were notified this morning that they, the team finished first in the nation on the Avery COVID-19 Fall Tournament. Bill Murphy sent an email out to the staff informing us of that win. So we're going to be letting the community know that in our Friday update. We're all looking forward to the holiday break. We can hear the choral students walking around in an atrium singing. It's a festive atmosphere in the school. I know I'm being invited to advisory lunches and things like that, just to show my face and say hi and have a happy holiday. Casey did a nice job talking about the council and what the council's been doing and the update with the Scheduling Committee. The Scheduling Committee also gave an update to the staff at our staff meeting last Wednesday. And the staff is going to be voting on the proposed schedule next week. To, just to get input from them, they've been transparent. They have questions and answers that they're sharing with everybody as they come to the committee. And we're hoping that we'll be updating the board in January on that. I want to thank the committee for all their hard work. They have put a tremendous amount of work into this. And as Casey indicated, it's, it's been a long process. I can say that the Scheduling Committee was my first meeting I attended when I, when I started at Hanover High School. And I was impressed. They, it's thorough. They share data and they have really, really good discussions about the schedule. To answer Lisa's question, I think to help answer Lisa's question, the staff has been involved in this. I would, you know, from my time, I know the staff has been involved with it. The committee members asked for feedback. At the last department meeting, they had the discussion about what classes they want as skinnies, what classes they want as blocks, and that the staff had input on that. And it was related to curriculum. As far as the, the long periods and the short periods, I believe that with the schedule that we went to this year, the staff has had PD. It's been minimal PD on the long periods. I believe that they're, they're ready for it. I think there's always room for professional growth. And we'll have those discussions. There is money in the budget for PD. And we're going to support the staff with, with the schedule that's chosen. March Intensive, there, there's been conversations about March Intensive. I know I brought it up at the last board meeting and what it could look like for the 2021 school year. The staff voted to move it to May. They were asked if they'd be willing to move it to May, and 67% of the staff indicated they would favor the change. And there's been a lot of discussion about it. The staff, some of the staff was a little upset that they didn't have a say in that of having it or not. I know there's a lot of questions with it right now. It was presented to the COVID Task Force today and they were in total, well, this is me thinking, were saying that they're in total support of this. They want to be updated as we move along. Matt Prince has, did a great job presenting to the COVID Task Force today. And the, the takeaway from that meeting was let's continue to move forward with planning for the, for the March Intensive that's going to be taking place in May. He's hoping to have presentation, or I guess sessions finalized sometime in January. And he's hoping to have a catalog for the board to look through for approval sometime late January or in February. The takeaway was is that the criteria really needs to be communicated. The staff has questions about that, what they can do and what they can't do with the community. So Matt is working on that. The Task Force invited him to run anything through them, if they have any questions at all, as far as safety is concerned with COVID. The end of semester, it's coming up fast. With that, I know this was a conversation at last month's meeting. We're going to have a regular class session through the end of the semester. And students, it's going to be up to the teachers. They're going to have a culminating experience. It could be a major project. It could be an end of the course exam. It could be a number of things that the teacher decides as a culminating experience. I included the schedule there for the, the end of the semester. And then the start of the second semester, we'll start on January 26th. And that's also outlined in my overview. The remote learning program for second semester, we're anticipating 40 students coming into the program. We're going to be offering 26 courses through the remote program. There'll be 14 core classes, three supportive classes, and nine elective classes, which include three independent studies. And it's going to include about 19 staff members when everything is scheduled out. Staff members could be teaching one class up until a full load through the remote program. Running parallel to that, those students in the remote program, some are also requesting if they can start registering for V-Lax classes, if they don't have a complete schedule. And they're, they're running that through Kathy and Emily as, as we start this process. Athletics, winter sports tryouts officially start on December 14th. They were participating, students were participating in the skills and drills prior to that. Megan informed me today, we have 269 students registered for winter sports. They're offering all the regular winter sports, except for unified basketball. There weren't enough participants for that. Swimming, they had to make cuts to swimming. Because of COVID, they can only fit so many people in the facility. Indoor track, you heard it just a few minutes ago, that indoor track will not be taking place this winter. So they're going to be doing everything outdoors. Megan's informed us that they're going to be wearing reflective vests and headlamps. And there's 35 students currently signed up for that. They're going to have a development skiing, Nordic skiing program this year. That's going to meet three to four times a week. Beginners are welcome. There's 25 students signed up for that. And basketball will still be, they're still going through tryouts and they'll be making more cuts and to keep the numbers at a minimum in the gym. Masks are being worn inside at all, at all sports. And they're being required for all outdoor sports if they can't maintain six-foot distancing. And competition begins January 11th. Megan is at the COVID Task Force meetings weekly, and she gives updates and answers any questions that come her way. At this time, no fans are going to be allowed to attend the home sporting events. And we're going to continue to monitor that as the season goes through. And then she also put some links on there about the, the Hanover Athletics website and what's on there. And then she's also instituted an out-of-school, out-of-season requirement, where no winter student athletes and team sports may participate in any outside teams, including practices, workouts, scrimmages. And of course, that's for COVID. Individual sports student athletes must have permission to do so. And again, it's because of COVID. So that's my update in a nutshell. I do want to, I can't thank, you know, I was remiss to thank Kathy and Emily for everything she did on the budget and everybody else that had input on the budget. And I'm confident that we're going to have a successful year next year with everything going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jay?
I want to thank you and the staff for trying to figure out a way to preserve March Intensive. With everything that our kids are losing in terms of traditions and activities that are fun, that unfortunately are precluded by COVID, the fact that we're willing to flex and try to maintain this is, is really important, I think. And that's, you know, hats off to you and the staff for trying to keep that going.
Yeah, and I, you know, I can't thank the committee enough. The committee is doing a lot of work. They're, they presented at the last staff meeting. They're publishing the questions that are coming up from staff, so everybody's on the same page moving forward. The questions that are being raised are real, and I'm confident that Matt Prince and the committee is going to have the answers. They're reaching out to community members and they're being creative with what they're doing. And I'm looking forward to it. You know, that was one of the reasons I, you know, I accepted the position. I, you know, March Intensive, council, the whole democratic school thing. And I'm really looking forward to seeing a March Intensive take place, whether it's the May Intensive or March Intensive. I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
John?
Thanks, Kelly. First, Jay, thanks for pointing that out. I think that's really great that we're trying to find a way to still do March Intensive. I think one of my favorite parts of these board meetings are when Matt comes in and presents and talks about all the exciting things that I want to sign up for, for March Intensive. So it's really great to hear that we're still moving forward. But I do have a question about the Unified Basketball. It's sad to hear that that's not going to happen. Can you talk a little bit more about the, where the disconnect is, where the numbers might be? Is it more of an issue with COVID or is it just a lack of something? You know, I think that's a really neat program and really, again, one of the best basketball games I've ever seen was a Unified Basketball game last year at Hanover.
So, John, it's interesting, because we had that in my previous school system. And I agree, it's, it's a great, great event to watch and to participate in. In speaking with Megan about this, there just weren't enough Hanover High School participants. From what I understand, it was, it was a number of schools that participated. It wasn't just a Hanover High School team. And we just didn't have the numbers to support it this year. I can get more details on that with Megan. But when I spoke to her about it a few weeks ago, she, because I was excited. I thought it was going to be, also, and then she said, we're not going to have the participants.
Well, John, you remember, like, if you've watched a game, you often, to, you know, the participants, the helpers are Hanover High School students. And the, the main participants, a few are Hanover High School students. And then we probably had students from three or four other schools. And we can't bring them in, in the environment we're in right now. And so, because then we're mixing with another school. And so I think that's the main reason. We all want to see it happen. It's, it's just that, it's the, it's COVID, really. Because it, we never had enough Hanover High School participants to make it happen. We had other, we mixed with other schools and we're unfortunately not mixing right now.
That makes sense. Thank you. I figured that was the answer. I just was curious. Thank you.
Dan?
Yeah. Jim, thanks for that. And I was interested and pleased to see a kind of more flexible, kind of capstone, end of semester schedule. That said, it might be early, but have those classes which are going to have exams thought at all about kind of a plan B if we're in the unfortunate situation where students aren't in school and how exams are going to be administered remotely in some sensible way. Unfortunately, seen all kinds of, sorry, cheating scandals all around the country related to online assessment. So anyway, that's, that's my question. Thanks.
Yeah, and those conversations have not taken place as a school, as a staff. That's something I could put on the next agenda item. Right now, you know, we're, I guess we're being optimistic that we're going to continue to, to march forward in person. But I hear what you're saying, Dan, and I'll go ahead and I'll put down an agenda item so we can have a plan B if necessary.
Yeah, anyway, I, I think it would be a good idea. It's, it's complicated. And, and if, anyway, if I can be of any help, I'm happy to, to speak to you or whomever. So thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Jim? All right, moving on to Tim.
Okay, well, while this, this meeting sort of falling in between Thanksgiving and the winter holidays, we wanted to take some time at RMS to thank some of the people who have made the fall what it is. The first thank you goes to the Friends of the Hanover Norwich Schools. We received three different grants from the Friends this fall, which we were actually able to procure the stuff, as I guess it was, from Friends of the Hanover Norwich Schools. So one of them was for PE equipment, and we managed to get a soccer and a football for each one of our homerooms, which doesn't seem like it should be a big deal for middle school students. But if you watch all of our students at lunch, running around outside, playing any different kinds of ball games, it really is sort of a nice reminder that that is part of what middle school is about. Especially when you watch a cohort try to play basketball with a football, which is, of course, one of the things that the middle school students try to do, but that's been fun. We also got a great grant so that all of our painting on canvas students have their own paintbrushes, which means they can spend most of their time painting and not cleaning all of the brushes so that the next cohort can use it. So that's been a lot of fun as well. And then finally, we've been able to get a lot of science equipment that our science teachers have been able to use so that we can keep our idea of learning through doing going. So we've had a number of different experiments running at this time. Today, I was sitting out in the hall, watching people throw balsa wood airplanes up and down the hall, trying to figure out exactly how to make them fly. All of that is through the grants that we got, so that we don't have to spend all of our time washing the airplanes, which is, you know, sort of our new normal. Thank our PTO. We had a great PTO appreciation breakfast on Friday. And we wanted to thank them too for not forgetting our And we wanted to thank them too for not forgetting our Remote Learning Academy teachers and making sure that each one of them is going to get a gift card to one of our local bookstores. And they actually did enough research to get gift cards from bookstores that are on the correct side of the Connecticut River so that we're not making people cross the river and, you know, have to quarantine after they use their gift card. And also thank you to Jamie and the SAU staff and, and everybody who has helped us with this budget presentation as it's gone forward from late night emails saying, wait, I don't understand what's going on here. So that's been really helpful. At Thanksgiving break, I think all of us sort of did a quick transition to, from sort of survival mode to now everybody on the staff seems to be thinking about going forward and what we're going to try to do in the year that is coming. We feel like we have a, a pretty good handle on how to make school run in the situation that we're in. And one of the things that we decided to do even before people had asked is to sort of do a comprehensive look at where our students are compared to where they would normally be and try to figure out what we would need to do going forward. So we're going to do much more of that for our January meeting. Most of that information will be qualitative because we really don't have a whole lot of quantitative data on the students since last March. But the one bit of quantitative data that we didn't run, which often nationally plays into sort of school morale, is our attendance numbers. And I don't know about other people, but when I ran our attendance numbers, I fully expected because of quarantine and travel, and we have some students who are having difficulty getting to school, that our numbers would be down. And in fact, it's exactly the opposite. So if you take out the number of students that we've had who were in quarantine, not in the mass quarantine that we had, but in other things, and we have some students are out, our student attendance is about ninety-eight percent, if not above, which is a pretty phenomenal number for a middle school. And the other thing that latches onto that is that our faculty attendance is also way, is way up. So we've had very few absences from faculty throughout the fall, which again, just shows me that while people were really nervous and anxious about coming back to school, the sort of energizing part of being in school in person has really paid off. So thank you to everybody who made that happen. Preliminary feedback that we get on the academic part is that students are not as far behind as we thought. And then a lot of people are noticing that the depth of the learning for the students is much deeper, even though we're not doing quite as much in terms of breadth. So we may not be covering everything that we covered before, but what we are covering, we're covering deeper. And it's actually giving students, they seem to have a lot more confidence in their understanding of what's going on. So we're hoping we can look at that going forward and we're hoping that that's something that we can continue. But we definitely need to examine that. We were talking today too about we need to do a comprehensive examination of our students in the Remote Learning Academy to see what being out of a traditional school for almost a year means in terms of social, emotional learning and a lot of other things. We're not worried. I don't think, I think that's the wrong term, but you know, maybe questioning to see if, if this is something that we want to keep going with. Since we've made a concerted effort to sort of mitigate all stress at RMS before the end of the year, we really don't have a whole lot going on at the end of the year. We do have a, one theater performance on Friday night that will be all virtual, which I'm looking forward to. I think will be really neat. But we've sort of done away with the parties. We do have a little bit of a spirit week going on this week. And combined, we're going to have a virtual ball drop on Tuesday afternoon for the new year. But we're sort of hoping just to keep everything as calm as possible. And we also, last week, through a number of the homerooms and Nurse Abby sort of went to, tried to set up a situation where we could send notes and cards and decorations to our neighbors down at Hanover Terrace, who are going through a bit of a tough time. So we were able to get all of that. Obviously, people asked immediately, how can you send that? Don't worry, it's being held in a room for a number of days, so we're going to keep everybody safe. But it is kind of neat to see the students doing a lot of outreach to the people who aren't quite as lucky as we are. We did have the, the other one big, I know it's coming up, but the, the, we did have a COVID event yesterday at school, which was just sort of showed again, I think, how adaptable everybody is and has become throughout this. And we managed to get everything taken care of. So far, everybody is safe and healthy. We'll know, we should know more over the next couple of days, but that's sort of where we are. We're really looking forward to planning the next semester. We'll start that process in January. I think we're all just trying to get through the twenty-second of December and get some needed rest and relaxation and sort of recharging for everyone. But the energy is still really high in the building, but in a good way and not nearly as frenetic as middle schools can be. So that's where we are. We're looking forward to it. We're, we feel very lucky, I think, every day to be coming into the building. And especially when something like this happens. To be perfectly honest, you wouldn't believe it, but the students who have had to go home until Monday are really mad that they're going to be out of school, which I would not have predicted a year ago at this time. But they really are upset. They're like, well, we want to stay. Well, so we're doing the best we can. We're zooming some people in. And we're taking care of that. So that's, that's our update.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Tim, it looks like you're about to be getting off easy here tonight. All right. Thank you, guys, for those wonderful updates. We will move on to policies, and this is a second reading of these policies. And Ben, can you remind me, I think we actually have already approved some of these at other districts. Is that right? Did we already approve at Hanover last week?
Yes, I believe they're approved at Hanover. I think all of them were approved at Hanover, and I did not think there were any edits based on the first reading either.
Okay. I think, I know I had received an email about one clarification question. Yes, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was me, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this on my first reading of these. But on J I C D, the Dresden Policy of Student Discipline and Due Process, under E, Process for Expulsion, it says that people may be expelled by the school board for all the reasons. And I'm wondering, is that where the process starts? Or where does the process of, I mean, I'm just assuming we wouldn't, as a school board, it wasn't clear to me how the referral of someone who needed to be expelled would happen. And so I don't know if that needs to be in there, or if it's implied that probably it would follow a suspension, which is clearly outlined in Part D. But it just, when I read it this morning, I was a little confused about how we would get a referral for someone who might have to be expelled. So.
So I suspect that it might be state statute that the school board has to be involved in that. Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, Kelly, you're right. It's a, an expulsion is a quasi judicial proceeding in which the board acts as both judge and jury. And the administration recommends expulsion that would come from the principal to the superintendent. Superintendent recommends to the board. Board actually oftentimes has an attorney present because you're, you're essentially removing someone from their, their right to an education.
Right. No, I, I mean, I was fine with us being the deciding vote. I just was less clear about how it got to us because the other part is really clearly outlined. So I was inferring, but I just wanted to make sure that my assumptions were correct. So, thanks.
Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments on these policies? Thanks, Lisa. Neil?
I've got one, and it was relative to KE. And I just think that it might be missing a word. So, policy KE, second paragraph. It's the sentence that says, "Any relief granted by the board will be bounded by the leadership principles that distinguish the..." And then I think after that, I think it might be missing a word. I'm wondering if that word might be difference.
Yes, there is a word missing. I don't recall us excising a word. It might have come to us that way. Jay, do you think those?
If you take the word "the," that may work.
Yeah. I think Rick's right. Okay, we will note that and wordsmith that, that word out. Thanks for the catch, Neil.
Yeah. And then I had one more general comment, and I don't know if we want to, it, it's related to the, the sexual harassment policies. It was my understanding, I think, based on some previous experience that we had with this, that the, the reporting requirements are not limited to the school year. Is that correct? These are three hundred and sixty-five days a year for events that might happen that don't necessarily have to happen on school grounds, but still could be reported to school administrators or teachers. Correct?
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct, Neil. Yeah, there's, there is no time limit.
Except that when there is a time limit, right? So once the process starts, if the process starts outside of regular school year, we still need to adhere to all of the timelines that may be included in, in the process moving forward.
Right.
And I, I guess the only one that kind of, I wonder about then is that do, do staff know that if they get a report outside of the regular academic calendar that they need to act upon it right away? Like if they, if, if for some reason, some student were to contact a teacher that they have a really good relationship with, but it happened to be over the summer months, does that teacher know that we need to get on it, like, right away, right?
Yeah, Jay.
They may not know that right now, Neil. We're in the process right now pending the, the approval of these policies. Megan Glynn is going to be providing training for those of us who will be administering the policy. And then we'll be updating our policy that we have right now that, that all of our teachers and all of our staff, in fact, take. So this is sort of step one. And then I'll be participating in both the investigator training and the decision maker training. Those are the two separate sessions that Megan is setting up. So all the nuances and all the deadlines and the timing and so forth will be, I, I assume, covered by Megan.
Thanks, Jay. Rhett?
Yeah, thank you. I think to one of Neil's questions is the, the piece about the school district's responsibility for Title IX is if it's, you know, occurring either on school property or at a school sanctioned or event that's overseen by the school district. So there may be an occurrence that's where something happens over the summer between two students, and if it doesn't involve the school district, that wouldn't be a complaint that we would investigate. We would want to ensure that those students have an equal opportunity when they return to school to not feel discriminated, harassed during the school day in the school environment.
So just to clarify, Neil, for voting purposes, was this something that you felt needed to be revised in the policy? Or was it more an implementation question?
I think probably more implemented, I, I think it's just, you want to make sure that for, for clarity's sake, like if these are the, if this is the document that folks are going to reference to determine what they need to do, that if there are things in there that relate to the difference between the academic year and the calendar year, as far as reporting and responsibilities and such like that, we probably ought to capture it in the policy or the regulation. But I'm okay passing these the way that they are now. And then following up maybe with attorneys or understanding like what the, you know, how this plays out and to see if they need to be revised later on.
Okay, thanks. Rick?
Wondering, does the CBAs cover this?
Can you elaborate? Sorry.
No, just the, the whole requirement. I don't know if the CBAs actually have the requirements that you're basically on the clock three hundred and sixty-five days if a complaint is lodged against you.
Good question. I don't, I don't know the answer. Does anyone want to field that one?
My best guess, Kelly, is that I, I think we probably, I mean, these are, these have been fairly well vetted at this point. And, you know, I would suggest that the board pass them tonight and that maybe some of these outstanding questions then get referred to legal counsel to find out whether or not they need to be addressed, or if these types of things are already covered in language in there, if we just aren't interpreting it correctly.
Okay, thanks very much. Any other questions on the policies themselves? Okay, we will be voting on these later tonight. Of course, policies always have to be revised, so if there is anything that comes up for you, Ben is, is your guy to reach out to.
Thank you.
All right, update. I know Kim has been eagerly awaiting the sixth grade tuition working group.
Thanks. Actually, I am going to see if Kari Asmes could Red Rover on over to prepare. So we, in Hanover, just as a quick reminder, have, and the Hanover Board has asked the Hanover Finance Committee, as one of their many duties, to actually help us with some financial analysis. And it was to help us understand really, how do we kind of resolve and smooth the sixth grade tuition swing? And Kari is actually filling in for Kerry Callahan, who was the chair of that working group that has convened, which consisted of Rick and I from the Hanover Board side and and Kari and Mac Gardner and Kerry Callahan was the chair from the Hanover Finance Committee side. And Jamie Teague also sat in, participated at every meeting, sat in. So I just wanted to have, give Kari the, kind of the floor to introduce and kind of basically share what recommendations this working group has had in this sixth grade tuition, kind of where did we come up with? So, Kari, was that a fair introduction?
Yeah, so good to see everybody again here. The one thing I would add is that we worked from an objective that we got from the Hanover School Board, and that was to consider the sixth grade tuition formula alternatives that reduce volatility and ensure equity. So that was our charge. The group first met on November second. In studying options, we considered ten years of data from fiscal year twelve to fiscal year twenty-one. After considering several alternatives, we came to a consensus recommendation last Thursday, December tenth. This recommendation was presented to the Finance Committee as a whole yesterday, and all members concurred with the recommendation. But to clarify, I want you to know that we understand that we are making a recommendation and that it is up to you, the Dresden School Board and the Hanover School Board, to make the final determination of what changes, if any, should be made. You could even tell us to go back to the drawing board. Of the options considered, the working group recommends that the boards consider adopting a new configuration for the Dresden and Hanover districts in which the resident Hanover sixth grade students are members of the Dresden district rather than the Hanover district. With this option, Hanover sixth graders would be included in Hanover's average daily membership, ADM, that we talked about earlier, and tuition payments would be eliminated. In terms of our objective, the volatility in tuition payments would disappear. But there is also a good chance that the shifts in the ADM split between Hanover and Norwich would be smaller, as a larger population base is generally more stable than a smaller one. And in fact, for the years that we looked at, the shifts in the ADM split would have been smaller in seven of the nine years and just about the same in the eighth year. So that, that should help in terms of, you know, that tail that sometimes wags the dog. In terms of equity, we looked at what the financial implication would have been in each of the past ten years had the Hanover sixth graders been included in the Dresden ADM versus paying tuition. And what we saw is that in some years, it would have benefited Hanover, and in other years, it would have benefited Norwich. And in other years, it would have benefited Norwich. But on average, Hanover would have paid approximately forty thousand dollars net more per year than it did. A little over ten percent of that, uh, or forty-five hundred um, was related to bond debt payments that we will uh, you know, end in the next uh, several years. So that's an it's uh, an example of how looking in the rearview mirror does not really tell you about where you're going. Uh, but the greater share of it um, has to do with the tuition formula itself in which the per pupil cost for any given year is based on the previous year's Richmond Middle School budget. So that means there is a lag in updating the costs associated with the operating component of the tuition amount. There are practical reasons for why it has been that way um, in terms of budget preparation as well as concerns that changing the formula um, would have made things even less fair. So just to put a finer point on it, with the recommendation that the working group is putting forth, the contribution for every sixth grade resident Hanover student would be calculated the same way it is for every other Hanover and Norwich resident student in grades seven through twelve. Uh, further, it would put an end to the awkwardness of comparing tuitions for the Hanover residents with students um, who reside outside the district and, for example, uh, attend the high school. Other advantages of this recommendation are that the annual calculations are simple compared to the alternatives and quite a bit more transparent for the public. Uh, this option would require a Dresden warrant article to amend the Articles of Agreement as well as an article on the Hanover warrant. Uh, but it should be kept in mind that the dri- the district had already gotten legal advice that any substantive change to the tuition agreement would be best adopted by the voters of the two school districts. Um, so that is our our recommendation. I'd be happy to answer questions or to uh, let your colleagues add their thoughts.
Thanks very much, Kari. Uh, Tom?
Uh, Kari, very straightforward. Uh, great. Thanks for the great overview. But uh, do you have documentation on this that we might be able to review too? There's a lot of information.
Yeah, sure. What are you looking for exactly? I mean, there's this spreadsheet that shows, you know, in any given year, the comparison and the average. But was there something else that you're looking for?
No, I'd just love to see the uh, comparisons you were just referencing uh, in a in a spreadsheet or paper too. And then um, and then having it laid out, I think, for the board as far as what the steps would be moving forward in terms of the uh, having to change the Dresden compact and uh, and other things as well would be would be great as we move forward here.
Right. And just to be clear, the compact itself would not have to change. That's the part that requires the act of Congress. But there's this other set called the Articles of Agreement, and that has been um amended a number of times in in my time in Hanover, which is now over twenty years. Um, and there is uh, some, you know, question about whether you could have it on the same warrant or whether uh, it would be better formed to have it on a, yeah, you handed everybody two pieces of paper. So that's uh, you know, that's sort of a finer distinction. But um, Jamie has been in touch with uh, attorneys who, for one, uh, maybe she should speak to that part. Um, but it's it's a fairly, you know, straightforward uh, warrant article.
That's great. No, I just, yeah, if we could just get that uh, what it would look like uh, and and I'd just like to see the calculations of the references you made to the uh, seven of nine years and and the other examples you had would be great to just have in front of me.
I guess.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, one of the um, sort of other little uh, pieces of information that I didn't work into that. But um, I know that on the Hanover side, there has been some concerns about, all right, well, so the um, Hanover share of the ADM would increase. And we know that that's a pretty, you know, that even a small change in that can mean a big swing. And on average, uh, if the sixth graders were in the uh, Dresden ADM, Hanover share would increase by three percent on average. So this year, we're sort of like at sixty-eight percent, so it would be at seventy-one percent. And kind of just in your own mind figure out, wow, that's, you know, it's it's a big chunk of change that we would, you know, pay routinely as opposed to the swings that you see in the sixth grade tuition.
Thanks, Kari. Uh, Ben?
Thanks. I echo Tom's uh, comment about wanting documentation. Additionally, with something like this where there's lots of moving parts and lots of complexities, I worry about unintended consequences hitting that we're not foreseeing. So it would be great if um, this committee can come up with sort of a pros and cons list or something equivalent from both the perspective of Hanover and Norwich. That'd be great to see as well as we uh, debate this decision. Thank you.
I was going to say that we um, did sort of think that we wanted to stay out of the political arguments. So we can um, you know, again, the, we know that the calculations for figuring out the ADM would be simpler than the tuitions that we have. But um, we did suggest to Kim and to Rick that if there were political considerations, that they would be the better ones to articulate those.
Thanks. And I think, Kim, that's your cue.
Thanks. I will lower my hand. Um, so I, you know, this, it was on the agenda as an update. And this was a recommendation, a very quick turnaround recommendation. So, you know, I think um, we wanted to get this in front of you because it could be a warrant article. But I think January is probably a more realistic kind of presentation. And so kind of definitely happy to hear feedback on this, so we know um, we can kind of come back with some of those. To get to some of um, the other um, kind of pros and cons, because, you know, we we did talk about this um, in the working group as well. But um, I think one thing that uh, can't be appreciated enough from the school side is that really eliminating these swings um, allows us to do long longer term planning for both for all the districts, frankly, even, you know, Marion Cross Ray. Because there isn't this crazy swing yo-yo effect that is now having to cut textbooks and field trips. Just because. So I think, you know, I think that this is something that is really helpful. You know, just from a board sense, you know, Tim does, Tim Boyle and RMS doesn't show up at our Hanover meetings, even though we paid sixth grade tuition, you know. I think there's just a lot of practical sense that Hanover sixth graders are in Dresden. And um, to have them be treated like seventh through twelfth graders makes just a lot of sense. And um, you know, really to get to to a con, you know, I I think we we did try to think how many cons are there? You know, Kari said, you know, for Hanover, it looks like it could be on average, based on the last ten years, potentially about forty thousand dollars um, more a year uh, for on the Hanover side. You know, i- is that just a transaction cost, you know, that's basically to tuition students? Um, we can kind of think about different kind of ways on how that would make a lot of sense. But that also gives us longer term planning runway. Um, the another kind of con, and this is really more for Hanover Board to to think about. But for uh, you know, we'd be shifting swings that would come to the Dresden side. And as we know, Dresden doesn't have reserve funds. Um, we have historically, um, although there are reasons for and against it, but we have, we have adopted and currently have a sixth grade tuition reserve fund. And uh, you know, just to to help balance out some of those swings. Now, hopefully, we wouldn't have those swings to begin with, so we may not need a sixth grade tuition reserve fund. But the uh, the flexibility in doing that is basically uh, out of the Hanover district. So it's just something to consider, although I I hopefully we wouldn't need it because we we don't do it for seventh through twelfth grade currently. So um, those are some of the that we can kind of elaborate more on that. If there's any questions too, I'm I'm sure I I didn't hit everything.
I would say for me personally, based on my time on the board in the last six years, it seems to have been a period when we've had these ups and downs. And then we have catch-up payments because we were supposed to have this, you know, smaller sixth grade class. But then we got seven new kids in the sixth grade class coincidentally. And that's, you know, an extra hundred and forty thousand that we hadn't expected to pay. And and it just, it it makes it impossible for our principals to um, create the strategic plan that we're tasking them to create and set priorities for their buildings when they have these huge um, numbers that are completely out of their control and unpredictable. And so I I'm I'm a huge proponent of anything we can do to smooth that out so that our our building administrators can start to put forth their agendas without other things directing their their goals. Um, sorry, Garrett.
Can someone just, um, and again, I don't want to go back and revisit time, but can someone just point me to where the existing tuition calculation, like how it's done? Because I have a feeling that, you know, that exist, the 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 tuition calculation may also just have been a little bit inaccurate, which is what's causing that, you know, overall difference if you add up the differences, the sum of the differences for all the years. Because I've always been looking at this and kind of saying, okay, like, there is some sort of, I've talked to Kim about there. You know, putting this all in tuition to obviously put this as like a variable cost, right? Where where a lot of the building and everything else at the seventh and eighth grade and then Hanover High is a lot of it's just fixed, right? It doesn't matter how many kids you have in it, you still have, you know, kind of the same number of teachers and a lot of the same cost to run these schools. So my guess is that's probably where this kind of forty grand difference is, is there is some mismatch between the tuition calculation and what the true kind of fixed costs are that the sixth grade should be burdened with, right? But anyways, it would just be interesting where to understand a little bit about the existing tuition and how that's calculated. Just for those of us that are kind of looking at this.
Thanks, Garrett. Uh, Jamie, were you?
So I I think I initially misunderstood his question. You're talking about the base tuition rate, not discount.
Yeah, what, how that rate is calculated, exactly. Like that twenty-two thousand, like where where does that number come from every year?
It comes from taking the entire budget for the Richmond Middle School and a portion of the district wide. And then it carves out the um, certain expenditures that are um, you know, borne by the school district as what you would consider non-variable expenditures. So I can share that with you. It's in writing, actually, in the tuition agreement. It tells you exactly what gets carved out and what gets used. I I have the document and I will share it with all of you. I shared it with the Hanover Finance Committee for the budget build uh, for the prior year. So, okay?
Okay, yeah. And again, I don't want to overthink it.
Yeah.
My guess is that if you add up the ten years and the difference over the ten years is close to zero, then it's probably correct anyways, because at the end of the day, it's the swings that are causing it. If the tuition's been pretty calculated accurately, then that's, you know, you're probably pretty darn close with this new method. Okay?
Thanks, Garrett. Um, so if there aren't any other questions at this point, um, you guys are going to bring this back to us with sort of a formal um, warrant article proposal in January. Is that correct?
I think that would make sense. Yeah. I I think. So I think we'll talk um, you know, with the working group, kind of the next steps and whether it's the the board members presenting or whether the working group kind of continues on. But we'll um, we'll get back to you and definitely provide um, the data behind it and kind of answers to those questions tonight. In addition to the warrant article language, obviously.
All right, super. And and just a a quick question for my Norwich colleagues. There isn't any talk going on in Norwich at this point about sixth graders moving over to the middle school. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I know that has been tossed around in the past, but not at this point.
That maybe, I mean, I think looking on out, it's something that might be a topic of discussion for the strategic plan.
Okay, super. Thanks. Yep, Kim?
Uh, just to that point, um, I I would say that this move could potentially kind of grease the wheels or show that um, we can assign Hanover sixth graders as part of Dresden. And so it I think um, it may not require the act of Congress to um, make changes, as we say. So just, I know it's for a strategic plan and not not my purview, but um, just wanted to share that there is that opportunity.
Thanks, Kim. All right, uh, moving on to our COVID update. See, Robin's still awake, so that's.
Yes. I am. And we had our COVID happen on a different day for once, yesterday. So we had our second case, and this is our second case at the middle school. And our last occurred over two months ago, October eleventh. So we've done very well. It was, once again, we always learn new things from each of these cases. So this time, we ended up having to send our nurse home. And that created some problems for us because we really need to have a nurse at the school. So we've been working for the last two days at the beginning of this meeting, included trying to work out a situation where we would have a nurse covering at the middle school. But the middle school did an amazing job. They got all of the lists together. So the process was smooth. I feel like every time we do this, we tweak it a little bit and learn something new. So I think, once again, it went very well, as well as one could expect. We did have our COVID committee meeting today, and we did some follow-up on the situation from the middle school yesterday. And um, we heard a presentation, as you heard previously, from Matt Prince about the now May intensive, not March intensive. And we tried to provide some guidelines to that group and will continue to do so. We've told them that that they can bring any questions that they have to us. And we're happy to work with them and try to answer. And I just reiterated the importance of keeping an open mind and knowing that things are going to change. And it might be more restrictive now, but hopefully things can open up and become less restrictive as we move through the process. Um, other than that, we do have some testing going on in the Norwich school. They'll do the second round at the state level. So all of the teachers will be tested who have signed up with um, COVID tests. And that is basically it for now for our COVID update.
Thanks very much, Robin. Uh, questions for Robin? All right, thank you, guys. And I did, I did just want to also say a quick word of thanks to Kari Asmus and that working group that is um, volunteering their time to help us look into that very complicated question. So thank you, guys, for that. Moving on to business requiring action, uh, so there are quite a few things on here. I have one small change, uh, but I think procedurally I'll take a motion. And then um, we can open discussion. I'll take a motion in a second, and then we can open discussion and then vote. Um, Ben?
Move to approve items B through F by consent.
And I'll take a second. John, thank you. And my only um, my only comment was on the minutes. Somehow Garrett uh, was left off of the members who are present. He's listed as making comments, but so we just need to add him for members who are present. Um, Rick?
Yeah, I just, I know we're going to do it by consent, but there is a donation from the Boys Soccer Club. So I don't know if someone wanted to thank them on behalf of the board.
I think that would be wonderful. I also wondered whether Jim or Megan, who I see has joined us. I'm not sure if Megan's still there, um, but if, I don't know if either of you wanted to speak to that very briefly. Perhaps they have stepped away for just a second. Um, oh, there's Megan.
I can speak to that, Kelly.
Thanks, Megan.
Yeah, it was a, so we had um, as we were wrapping up the weight room project with um, the fundraised money, we had just put a call out to the friends groups to see if anyone else wanted to donate, and that's where we got that lovely donation. So that is what that is for.
Great, thanks, Megan. And thank you to the Friends of Boys Soccer for that contribution to the entire school. Yes, Rick?
The other thing is we slightly amended one of the policies. I don't know how you do that with a consent, whether it's consent as amended?
I think it's a wording, right? It's a it's a wording amendment, so I think we're okay. Is that right? Yeah, I think we're just going to take out the, so we should be okay. It's not substantive if that's the case. Thanks, Rick. All right, uh, if there are no other questions or additions, um, I guess we'll just do a roll call vote, uh, starting with Rick.
Johnson, yes.
Tom?
And then, yes.
Neil?
Bill, yes.
Ben? Ben?
Keeney, yes.
Lisa?
Kristy, yes.
Kim?
Arminia.
Dan? John?
Hunt, yes.
Marcella? Think I couldn't hear it, but I think that counts. And McConnell, yes. Okay. Um, excellent. And reports and communications, um, committee reports. Anything additional to share? We've heard from I think most of our active committees this evening. Okay. Yeah. Neil?
Uh, just that the, well, you were there. The evaluation committee, um, met, um, with a new round of membership. Um, continued the discussion, um, related to, um. Uh, starting to, I think, get into the discussion, um, more procedurally of, um, you know, how we're going to go about doing. Um, the evaluation process, um, some of the models that we're looking at and the implementation aspects of those things.
Thanks Neil. Um, I did actually, I had mentioned, I think at the Hanover meeting perhaps, that. I would reach out to NHSBA and just see if there was any discussion of, um. K through twelve teachers sort of moving up on the priority list for vaccines. And I, I did get a response back that at this point, there hasn't been. Any discussion of that, but things are just kicking off. So, um, if I hear more, I will follow up with you. That meeting is coming up in January. I need to double check the calendar date. Uh, but NHSBA will be meeting virtually in January to vote on, um, the items. That have been put forth and I'll be sure that I send that out to you guys, um, so that you have a chance to see the resolutions. And we can formulate an opinion in January. Uh, any other committees? All right. Um, I don't have anything to report. I'm so grateful that we were all able to move this to the fifteenth. So that we're not doing this three hour meeting on the twenty second of December. So thank you all for that. Um, and our next, uh, meeting will be January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll include the public hearing and the budget adoption. I'm sure it will be another short meeting. Uh, moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thanks Kelly. Just a few things. Uh, first of all, I, I just want to add my thanks to everyone who's been just so, so diligent in. Following all of our protocols, making school a safe place for our students and our staff to be. Uh, Robin, thanks again for leaping into action as soon as we got noticed that there was a case. Um, the folks at RMS did an outstanding job of, we're getting to be experts at contact tracing and, um. And the staff has been extremely flexible and responsive. And, uh, and unfortunately this is becoming sort of routine at this point. Um, that said, I, I, I'm sure you're all with me in being really excited about the fact that we have. A couple of promising vaccines that are actually being distributed. And, uh, to Kelly's point, I know that Michael Hensley's advocating, uh, at the state level in New Hampshire that. Um, our teachers should be treated, our, our, our school staff should be treated as, as frontline workers in, in this distribution. Because so many of our other frontline workers rely on the schools, um, for, for safe places for their children to be while they're doing their important work. Uh, so he's been making that argument and hopefully he'll get some traction and, and we'll, we'll see, uh, our teachers move to the headed line. I also promised a, sort of an update on, on the equity work. Uh, Julie did a fine job of sort of summarizing where we are. I've attached a document that, um, the committee prepared that sort of takes us through, um, from the very beginning of the work a couple of years ago. Um, through our current training and then, and then goes into a plan for the coming year. Uh, in my conversation with some of the leaders of the equity committee, we're, we're really looking at turning the corner from staff development, which is something that. Was identified as a need in the original audit, um, to curriculum work, which, which, um, we. Fully intend to have equity be one of the pillars of both our strategic planning and our curriculum development work moving forward. Um, I guess to that end, Robin and I have been meeting, uh, we're starting a, a series of weekly meetings to re-energize the strategic planning and. And curriculum work. And, um, it's been kind of refreshing to spend an hour or so actually talking about education. Instead of quarantining and following the rules of Vermont and New Hampshire alternately. Um, so, uh, making progress on that. Um, I'm going to share with the board that I think, uh, what we're looking at is probably moving away from having a. Um, an external, uh, facilitator. Uh, now that Robin's joined us, we feel that the two of us can help to, um. Organize that. We also have a whole cadre of staff at the Ray School who have been through a facilitate, facilitation training. Uh, through UVEI. And so we feel like we can expedite the process a little bit and have in-house. Uh, facilitation, which should help us in terms of scheduling meetings and so on as well. So we hope to really jumpstart that second semester. Um, and looking forward to it. Uh, it's something that unfortunately fell by the wayside with, with COVID. Um, the other thing I need to update the board and public on is that, um, and, and Jim's with us and, and understands that. He was hired as an interim principal. And so we have a choice to make as we move forward about what we're going to do as far as that search. And, uh, so I have administered a survey to the staff. Um, responses were due by the end of the day yesterday. Um, I've begun to, to summarize the feedback. I also got feedback from the board. Um, and when we, uh, go into non-public this evening, I'll share, I'll get, share a brief update. I haven't done a complete analysis yet, but I'll kind of let you know where we stand on that. Um, really grateful to the work, uh, for the work that Jim has done, uh, to this point, uh, keeping the train on the tracks. Uh, with all of the change and, and all the pressure of COVID. And, um. And, uh, we'll, we'll move forward, uh, forthwith. So, um, that's, uh, that's essentially all I have. The only other thing I would offer to the public is an appeal that, uh, we've got a, a rather lengthy holiday coming up. And it's, it's just, you know, there's, there's that obvious, um, excitement about the fact that we're, we've got a. Light at the end of the tunnel with these vaccines, but since they won't have been distributed, we still need to be really careful. And it's, I think everyone's done a wonderful job of working together to keep our schools open. Um, but it only takes, you know, a, a bad, one, one bad lapse in judgment to, um, to cause an outbreak. So we really need to be careful, take care of each other and, and think about, uh, what it means to, um, to follow those protocols, even though we start to see a chance for a vaccine. Um, and make sure that we take good care of ourselves and our community. So, um, I urge people to. Continue on, uh, doing all the, the things that we've been doing to make sure that we keep each other safe. And, uh, we will need a non-public to discuss a couple of items and, um, we can talk more about the principal search at that time.
Thanks Jay. Uh, questions for Jay? All right. Um, moving on to our assistant superintendent's report. I think we have. Anything else to add?
Well, I, I'm actually happy to add that I had some time last week that was non-COVID related. And I did get to work with Jay on the strategic planning, which was exciting. And I've had some time also to work on some evaluation pieces and work with the high school and each of the elementary schools and middle school. So it's been, it's been quite nice and enjoyable. So not all COVID related this time.
I'm sure that is a nice, a nice break, a chance to get back to that. Excellent. Uh, and Jamie, our business administrator's report, I think some current financials updates.
Good evening again. Um. So I had a chance to sit down and take a look at the financials with all of the moving parts that have been going on. And I share it with you here tonight, um, in an abbreviated, unaudited format. Um, with my opinion of what the encumbrances will be. From now through the end of the fiscal year, which, um, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, I'm basing it on. You know, some assumptions that I would normally make. Um, let me walk through it very quickly because I know the time is getting late. So the, the top part is the expenditure sections, uh, in a very abbreviated format. There are other reports attached that you can take a look at if you want to look at specific areas. Um, these are the projected budget balances that I'm projecting to year end. Uh, based on going through all the different line items and making the assumptions that I normally would. Um, keeping in mind some things, you know, I cannot predict. Um. Dresden revenues, again, it's a bit of a tough year because of COVID. The local revenues are taking a hit predominantly in our rental income lines. And in the interest income lines, uh, which is to be expected as the economy has taken a hit from the pandemic. Uh, we've talked about the tuition projection. It is a moving target. Right at this point, this snapshot in time says that we will not make our initial. Um, projection from last year. So those two variances in revenue are, um. Are a shortfall of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, I'm projecting about a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar. Uh, potential fund balance. Totally depends on what happens over the next six months. I'm hoping knock on wood that will be as, you know, as stable as we have been. Uh, we had a two hundred thousand dollar fund balance we carried into revenues. We have been awarded by the state of New Hampshire, as everybody knows, we got the two hundred dollars per student, uh, grant. Uh, that came in. Uh, then there was an additional ten million dollars, which was made available. Um, from COVID funding. And you had to gather your expenditures and submit, uh, an application for the balance of what. The initial monies they sent to us did not cover. Um, I've also attached that. Copy of that report that we sent to the state of New Hampshire. Uh, you could only apply for fu, for expenditure coverage. From March to December thirty, thirtieth, actually, uh, for this year. In two thousand twenty, which we did, we prorated everything that needed to be prorated. Um, we filed for a total expenditure. Dollar amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, we had already received, um, you know, monies, as I mentioned, in the amount of about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, of the three hundred and sixty thousand, five ninety-one, we requested. An additional hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, uh, which was prorated. Cause there, uh, there was a bunch of other schools that did the same thing. So they prorated it to sixty-seven percent. Um, and I'm sorry, and we received an additional hundred and twenty-three thousand, five thirty-eight. Our initial first, uh, dollar amount that we received, let's do some quick math here. Uh, was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So all totaled, we've been given awarded through grants. Three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh, to cover our initial expenditures through. December thirty of three hundred and sixty thousand, five ninety-one. Um. I'm showing that here, even though it is a grant, because we have not moved all the expenditures. Out of our expenditure lines up above here. Uh, we will need to do that. The state has said that we have to move them out into, uh, special grant fund lines. Uh, so that would mean that we would have, um, an operational, potential operational fund balance. After moving those expenditures out, um, of approximately four hundred and fifty-five thousand, six seventy-four. Um, projecting a four hundred thousand dollar budget surplus offset. And so that would say we would have total unassigned surplus of fifty-five thousand, six seventy-four. We still have our fund balance retainage of six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That we, you know, that is set aside for emergency purposes, of which this is considered COVID expenditures are considered. Um, emergency, um, pro, emergency expenditures. Um, but as of this point. Time, we have been able to cover those expenditures, you know, assuming our grant money offset. Uh, and we move them out. So that's what Kim was alluding to when she said that I, I have changed. The projected budget surplus offset to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the budget as built for Dresden. We can increase that amount, um, utilizing some of this fund balance retainage. That we have not yet had to dip into. Two of the biggest, um, variables, or maybe three of the biggest variables in this early projection. Um, is that the tuition number here, the tuition revenue received number can change. You know, every other day it changes. Kids come, kids go. Um. And the other part is that if we, God forbid, something happens and go remote and don't run. You know, one of the athletic programs, uh, this local revenue number will also go down. Because that has, you know, assumptions in there that we will continue with athletics, um, as we have. Some of the assumptions, the third, the third, uh, variable that I don't have control over. Um, is God forbid, should something happen and, you know, we have to hire. Um, multiple additional staffers to cover outages. Or, you know, um, other unforeseeable issues. You know, this projected balance, budget balance could absolutely change and go down. Um. We saw a similar phenomenon in, um, Hanover. Due to the dollar amount of this, the state, you know, covering some of our expenditures. Um, so that's what I have at this point. It is early for me to do something of this magnitude. Uh, I want to, you know, wait until December ends and then revisit it again. When we, when we have a better idea of what the next, um, semesters look, look like for our needs. Um, but all in all, I think it's good news based on where we were at in August.
Thanks Jamie. Uh, Kim?
Thanks Jamie. So yeah, my question is around retainage and thinking about next year and, um, actually. What? What is our cap for retainage next year? So this past year and why we have a retainage amount of six hundred and sixty-one thousand, I believe it's. That like four point six percent of our, of our possible five percent. Um, kind of, um, possible amount that we could retain of our net assessment of the Norwich side of the red net assessment, I, that. Um, so I think, but I'm questioning going forward, the reason why we could have the five percent. Um, this past year is because COVID and because the governor's number thirty-eight order allowed us to. Um, increase that cap from two and a half percent retainage to five percent. And, um, I'm not sure what, uh, next October will look like when we need to make this decision again. Um, I am reminded, um, that our warrant article that, um. Was passed in Dresden, um, had a two and a half percent kind of as, as the cap, which is what. The RSA said up until COVID. Um, and so, uh, you know, I just, I'm wondering. Um, how much of that six sixty-one, A, do we even need? And then B, how much can we actually retain, you know? Falling within our, our guidelines and our warrant articles and governor's order and everything. So, um. Something for January, I think to discuss, um, and something for the board to kind of consider to, I, you know, just. I, I, I think that there's something worth to think about there.
So to your point, the, uh, the governor's order allowed you to, to retain up to five percent. That's why. Even though we had the warrant article that had been voted, that has not been rescinded in place. That's why we had to do the last minute, you know, signatures that we had had the discussion and send it to the government, to, to the DOE. Um, the RSA I believe is changing and has been changed up to five percent. Starting with the next fiscal year. It was not made clear to me that we would have to revoke that. I think once you vote an RSA, I think it stands. Unless it's rescinded. Um.
Yeah. And I think it's something we maybe take offline, but I think if we look back, I think maybe. Yeah, and I think it's something we maybe take offline, but I think if we look back, I think maybe it was actually two, the. Two and a half percent was written in the Warren article from my, my understanding. We can go back and see. If that is, if it's not true, you know, we can kind of, I just want to share that I think we maybe need to have some more discussion about.
Sure, that's because the RSA at that point was two and a half.
This for us to look into.
Sure.
Thanks, guys. Other budget questions for Jamie at this point? Alrighty. Thank you, Jamie. I know you have been working more than overtime and here we are at 10 o'clock. Working overtime some more. So thank you for everything you're doing for us this year. I know you're. Dealing with two years budgets all at once, so really, really appreciate it. And with that, I will take a motion to enter non-public session. We will need to come back to take a vote after the non-public session. Anyone? Ben?
Move to enter a non-public session under RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3 to C personnel.
Thank you, Ben. Is there a second? John? And I'll take a roll call starting with Kim.
Carmenius.
Tom?
Candice.
Neil?
Bill, yes.
Ben?
Keeney, yes.
Lisa?
Kristi, yes.
Dan?
Rockmore, yes.
Rick?
Johnson, yes.
John?
Yes.
Garrett?
Paul, yes.
Marcela? And Kelly McConnell, yes. Marcela, your microphone seems to not be working, just as a heads up. Can't actually hear you, but I saw your mouth move, so we'll count it. Yeah, Jay.
Oh, yeah, I missed the second.
The second was John.
Ask a question? Do we know that the other link is live? Because Josh usually.
Josh is here.
Okay.
Well, Josh has got it up. He's got another meeting, but, but he, he said it would be ready for us.
Okay, thank you.
Can someone, can someone send me that link?
Me too.
It hasn't changed, but yes, yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll see, see you all over there.
Started sneezing just as it came back on. How to make an entrance on Zoom?
We could all have our own theme music as we come in. Like basketball players do in the NBA. Your walk up music for baseball.
All right, I will take a motion to approve those positions. I'm sure we're all trying to get back into board docs. Is anyone ready to go with that motion? Ben?
I'll try and apologies for any mispronunciations of last names. Move to approve increasing Hanover High School social studies teacher Noah Brennan from point six to one point oh. And science teacher Dagmar Koolert from point five to point six FTE. And decreasing Latin teacher Brady Eskelson from one point oh to point nine. And Spanish teacher Jean Essex from point eight to point seven FTE. For the second semester of the twenty 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 one school year as presented.
Very, very well done. Thank you. Rick, is that a second? Okay, all in favor, take a roll call. John?
Hunt, yes.
Tom?
Camden, yes.
Dan?
Brockmore, yes.
Ben?
Keeney, yes.
Marcella?
Iblasi, yes.
Neil?
Odell, yes.
Lisa?
Christie, yes.
Uh, Rick?
Johnson, yes.
Kim?
Hartmania.
Uh, and me, McConnell, yes. I was about to ask Josh to vote. Okay, and I think that is all that we have for tonight. Uh, if you guys have agenda items for next meeting, please let me know. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn at ten thirty four. Nobody wants to leave? Okay, Dan?
Move to adjourn.
And a second. Kim? And a roll call. John?
Hunt, yes.
Tom?
Camden, yes.
Dan?
Brockmore, yes.
Uh, Garrett?
Palm, yes.
Ben?
He, yes.
Marcella?
Bus, yes.
Neil?
Odell, yes.
Lisa?
Christie, yes.
Rick?
Johnson, yes.
Kim?
Hartmania.
And McConnell, yes. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Enjoy the break.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Hallie.
Bye, guys.
Everyone.